Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year. My name is Carrie Marneak. I'm the Chair of the Board. I'm going to read a few notes before we get started tonight. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, by tuning into Cable Access Television Government Channels, Verizon Channel 30, or Charter Channel 192, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and clicking "What's Playing Live." If you're on the phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. I'd like to confirm member access at this point. If all the board members can respond in the affirmative when I state your name. Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Millie Melton?
Here.
Amy Peretzky?
Here.
And Michelle Gillespie. And then staff, and I call your name if you could please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Jubert?
I'm here.
Brad Lutzfield?
Here.
And Bob Federico.
I'm here. Good evening, everybody.
Great, thanks. Let's see. So for ground rules, I will invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. We don't have public comments tonight. We don't have the executive session tonight. If technical difficulties arise, the Chair will suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made. Any disconnections and reconnections of board members should be accurately reflected in the meeting minutes. So with that, why don't we get started? It is a little after 6:30. We first had the continued public hearing for 425 Whitney Street. The applicant has requested a continuance to the February 2nd, 2021, meeting at 6:30 PM. The reason we are continuing is the purpose of this meeting was to start a conversation about the peer review, hoping that we'd have some results, but I believe that they actually just got started this week, so there's really nothing for us to cover on tonight's meeting. So with that, that's the reason why we have a request here for that continuance. Would anybody like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 425 or 435? 425. 425 Whitney Street for February 22nd at 6:30 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that.
Great, and Carrie is an aye. So we will continue that hearing to February 2nd at 6:30 PM. Next on our agenda, we have a discussion with Attorney George Pember regarding the rezoning of 37 South Street. So what I'll do is I'll invite George to join us. I'd like, we do have a full agenda tonight, so we're gonna allocate about 15 minutes or so for George to talk a little bit of what he is asking for the Planning Board, and then if the board members have any questions, we'll ask questions. And then I'll hold off on fully discussing if it's a bylaw when we get into our bylaw discussion. So why don't we start it on that? Let's see. I don't see Mr. Pember here. Kathy, do you?
He's an attendee.
Oh, thank you. Alrighty. Oops, there we go. Hi, George, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. I'm not sure you're gonna be able to see me.
There you go. Okay.
All sorts of technical issues with this today, so.
No problem. So I don't know if you're able to hear. Welcome. We would like for you to talk a little bit more about what you had in mind, and then the Board will ask questions, and then we'll discuss later as part of our bylaw discussion. So you're welcome to get started. Do you have anything to present, or is it just?
I don't. What I wanted to do tonight was just kind of give you a very brief overview of the situation, then I'd like to come back with your permission, maybe at your next meeting, and give you some stuff to really look at and, you know, be a lot more specific. Right now, I'm just trying to give you an idea and see if it's something that you would get behind, and if so, then I'll be much more specific the next time through. So what I'm talking to you about tonight is the property of 37 South Street. For those who may or may not realize that that's basically law offices, occasionally there's other type businesses in there, but principally it's the law offices. For years, it was the Law Office of Bob Gabriel, then Dick joined him, then his brother David joined. Dick still has an office in there. There are other attorneys in there from time to time. When the zoning bylaw was, the current one was created, and the district dividing lines were set, the line came just north of this property, even though it had been used commercially for years, since, I believe, the early 60s and perhaps even earlier than that. For, I guess, for sake of continuity, I'm not sure of why, but the line came just on our property line, but excluded us and put us into the residential instead of the downtown business. So the problem with that is that anytime there's a new business in there, technically speaking, we should be seeing Bob, and then he should be sending us off to the zoning Board of Appeals to get a special permit. And it's pretty cumbersome for a place that has been a business location for years and long before the drawing of the new boundary lines. So basically, it's just, we're looking to relocate that boundary line to include this particular property in it, so that we don't have to go through that process every time there's a new business in that building. That's, I mean, that's the sum and substance of it in a very short period of time.
Great. Board members, are there any questions?
So previously, was it commercial, and then went to residential, and then?
No.
Never?
It was residential until either the 50s or the 60s, and I'll be a lot more specific when I come back to see you the next time. And it's been commercial ever since.
Oh, the office, okay.
And it's currently commercial.
So you want, you want to go from commercial to residential?
No.
Residential to commercial?
Yeah, I want to go from residential to commercial. That's correct, yes.
Oh, so it's currently residential?
Right.
Okay.
Anyway, so it's quite interesting, because if you look at the zoning map, the commercial aspect of this really kind of cuts around 37 South. I don't know if anybody has any history there as to why that would, I mean, if it's always been operated in a commercial aspect, you would think specifically that would have been included into that commercial or business zone downtown, and it almost looks like it was excluded intentionally.
I'm not sure if it was excluded intentionally so much as there was trying to have some continuity in the way they drew the line, but the net result is it got excluded. And so it's just, it has been used commercially for years and years and years, long before the new zoning law, probably right around the time of the original zoning law, and it's just, you know, it's a headache for Bob, and it's a headache for the client to have to continually go back and look for special permits.
So Carrie, from what I recall was back in, Kathy, we did the rezoning, was it 2009? Okay, so back in 2009, as we were doing the rezoning package, some of the lots downtown were actually split. They were like non-conforming. They were like half in residential, half in commercial. So at that time, I remember distinctly, it was the ZBA and the Planning Board talked about how redrawing the lines to make sure that if you were in commercial, you know, the back end of your property would be, you weren't, you know, to make them from non-conforming, because some of the lots were clearly split the way the old maps were. So at that time, I mean, Kathy, you can talk to it, we redo the lines around to make sure that everybody was conforming that was in there. Obviously, they didn't include this parcel. And I thought it was only downtown. I don't remember if it was all the way down to Business West or Business East, but we certainly did go through the map, because I think some of the lots were half on residential and half on commercial. George, during, since 2009 that happened, have business owners had to go to the ZBA to get approved to go into that building?
Yes, they have, Michelle. Yes.
Okay. So?
I know Business West, they actually moved the line because Del Greco had those three pieces there, and there were two residential in one business, but during the 2009 rezoning, the line went down the middle, so they moved it over, so it was two businesses and then one residential. So it must have gone all the way over there, because that line did move too.
Yeah. I think, I think Michelle is correct in that they tried to move the line to conform to property lines rather than what had been before, which was a certain number of feet from Route 20, and that unfortunately cut through some property lines. So they tried, they tried to move the zoning line to conform with property lines, and they tried to be somewhat uniform, which made an awful lot of sense, except that no one realized at the time, certainly not me, and probably Michelle didn't, because Michelle was on the board at the time. I don't think any of us realized that what we were doing is we were taking a property that had been used commercially for years and years and years and turning it into residential zoning.
So at the time, it was running in 2009, prior to 2009, it was a commercial. But we rezoned it as residential. That doesn't make any sense why they would be, if they were already operating commercial.
Amen.
You're saying?
Amen.
What was the reason that you would pull in a commercial and a residential? Was it not operating commercial at the time?
Oh, no. It's, there's, there've been law offices in there, as I said, I'm quite sure since the 60s. So long before the 2009 rezoning.
Yep. So Carrie, the use, what George is trying to say was, the use was always commercial, but when we did the lines, and Kathy can do this for clarification, we did this because some businesses were half in commercial and half in residential. So it could have been the business next to it, which I don't know exactly what business that is. The building next to it may, part of that building may have been in part residential. So it was when the lot was split. Does that make sense? So then we took the lines and then made sure that if it was in commercial, that the whole lot was in commercial, which is why Amy was mentioning the Del Greco property down at Business West.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I'm wondering, Michelle, so the place next door was half and half, so I'm wondering if the property George is talking about might have been a home occupation, like if it, was it ever really in commercial? How do we?
I don't know about that, yeah.
Oh, absolutely it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a way to prove it?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Is there any proof in the deed or the registry of deeds?
I don't think you're gonna get proof in the registry of deeds. However, if you look at the assessor's records, it was owned by Bob Gabriel, who was an attorney in town for years, and he had his office in there, and then other attorneys came in and they put some additions on the building to accommodate additional attorneys in the building.
Should be able to tell by the maps too, because when I went to Del Greco's, I could see where the line was pre 2009, and then where the line was post 2009. I took the maps and overlaid them on top of each other, and you could see where it moved. So I would think for 37 South Street, we should be able to see where the property line moved before and after.
Okay. I can do that for the next meeting, sure.
So my question is just related to, you know, time sensitivity. This has obviously been the case since 2009. Is there a specific reason why this year is the year, or?
It's because the owner came to me the other day and said, "Is there something we can do about this? This is a very cumbersome situation where every time I get a new tenant, I'm supposed to be going back to the zoning Board of Appeals."
Okay. So, but it's not something like he's trying to sell the property and needs some, so it needs a different designation. This is just like cleaning up, not like a time sensitive?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Kathy, do you have any of this already? Did you end up finding anything, or?
No, I ended up not being able, not, not being, not being able not to find something, not having looked through it yet. I wanted to see where your discussion went tonight, and then what I can do, you know, George can work with the assessors to talk about, you know, how the property has historically been classified, and then I can, for your next meeting, if you put this on your next meeting, I'll go back through the rezoning in 2009, and take a look at, you know, what it was zoned beforehand, and then probably even go through some of the minutes from the zoning subcommittee, if this particular parcel was specifically discussed.
Okay. My only question was related to, and Kathy, I mentioned this before, just in terms of spot zoning. How does this, to zone for one parcel, does that put us in a category of spot zoning, or?
I don't see this particular situation, anyone being able to claim spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you, when you really take something that's out of character with the neighborhood and change the zoning, and whether the neighborhood is commercial or industrial, you know, or residential. Whereas this particular parcel is, you know, adjacent to a commercial zone. Again, we'll double check the zoning as to whether, whether it was, whether the property was physically zoned commercial. It's, it's always been used as commercial, as long as I can remember. And so, so we'll look at what, what it had previously been zoned at. Was it a split zone? You know, all, all those kinds of questions. But given the fact that it's, you know, directly abutting commercial property, and has historically, for at least since the 50s, George, you said?
Either the late 50s or the 60s, I'm not sure which.
You know, has?
I'll have that information.
Has been used commercially, you know, there's, there's no spot zoning there.
Okay. And, oh, Amy, go ahead.
Oh, another thing too is, we've talked about it at the end of the master plan, that there's gonna be a whole downtown visualization, and we're going to be laying out what we actually foresee as a downtown. I talked about it, I think, with you Kathy, last year I had asked for some, they were talking about wayfaring and, and you had mentioned to wait until the Master Plan Implementation Committee meets. So I'm almost wondering if this isn't a rush, this is just something that the owner wants to clean up, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee is starting this year, maybe we should wait until they outline the downtown and a decision's made for where the downtown zone is actually gonna be, versus doing it twice.
Kathy, how much work is involved? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just wondering how much work is involved to like put forward a bylaw that has the different zoning maps, and in the past, when we've wanted to rezone, we were kind of hesitant because of the work involved with it. Is there?
Well, I mean, what the Board has talked about recently, you know, was looking, you know, whole scale at, should, you know, a few hundred acres in the industrial district, should that be rezoned to some sort of commercial use or limited industrial, or? So to do something like that, what you need to do is, you know, when you're affecting many properties or multiple properties, obviously, you want to take a look at your use table, you want to take a look at setbacks, you know, traffic patterns, you know, what availability, availability of water and sewer, you know, how does, how does that, you know, all of those things factor into what you may or may not change in area of town? This particular lot, I think, would be relatively easy to do. Again, I think the, I think the issue, I mean, I'm not, you know, again, I haven't done any research yet, but I mean, I think the issue here is that this property has always been used as a commercial property. And so, you know, why not zone it properly? If it's always been used commercially, and the owner, you know, wants to maintain it as commercial property, then it should, you know, in my opinion, it should be zoned properly. But as far as the, you know, do I remember exactly what the conversations were back in, you know, 2005, when we started the Community Development Plan? No, and I don't remember what the zoning was of this particular property. So, you know, again, I can, I can look up some of that information as well as, you know, George, Mr. Pember on behalf of his client, you know, looking up some of the information. As far as the downtown, I mean, absolutely, I think, I don't know whether rezoning will be involved in, you know, when, when the town moves forward with, with studying the downtown. Amy, some of the things you would talked about just, just now, you know, as far as wayfaring, that's all about signage and, and directing people to the downtown.
Yeah.
So the, you know, whether, whether ultimately there's a rezoning that, that changes what the, what the boundaries of downtown is, I mean, I, you know, my guess is as good as anybody's, whether that's going to happen or not. But, you know, again, with the implementation of the master plan, we know that that's one of the first things that is, you know, most likely going to be looked at is, is, you know, what do we do with our downtown? And that's gonna cover the gambit. It'll be looking at rezoning, it'll be looking at traffic patterns, it'll be looking at design. So, you know, could, could this property in fact wait till then? Perhaps, but given the size of the property and, and the fact that it's surrounded by commercial, you know, it doesn't really make sense that it would be anything other than commercial, but. So it would be one zoning bylaw that, that you would need to, I'm assuming what Mr. Pember is, you know, is going for here is, you know, for the Planning Board to sponsor it as opposed to having to do a citizen's petition. So, you know, we would write the bylaw to rezone the prop, this particular property, and, and then do a map change, and it was all, it would all be part of one zoning article.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions?
I guess the only comment I would make is that, in looking at, again, the zoning map, it, it does almost appear to have been carved out of the business zone, and my only, you know, from a historical perspective, is there, was there some intent behind that? Meaning, oh, this is the line that we should go back to residential if this building ever sells, or you should be converted back to residential, or was there some other reasoning behind why that wasn't included that we should be at least considering? That's all.
Okay. So why don't we wrap this up and we go move into our bylaw discussion a little later? So George, what we can do is, we'll discuss this part of our bylaw discussion. We have to switch over to a couple of different things we needed to definitely take care of tonight because they're time sensitive, and then reach back out and figure out what next steps are, or obviously you're welcome to stay, but I don't know if you wanna spend your night that way, so.
Carrie, can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
Um, I've just seen a change in commercial where a lot of them are looking for the mixed-use part, the residential combined with commercial because of the change of the commercial nature of industry and the decline of the need for commercial buildings. I understand he has a law practice there, but I mean, wouldn't it be more wise for your client, if you're going for it, to at least consider it both options, like a, a mixed-use versus giving up the residential? Because I know the neighbor to the left is residential, and the neighbor to the right is commercial. You know, it's just an option for consideration, considering what we're seeing right now.
I would consider that, although when he and I had a brief discussion, he didn't indicate anything other than he's very happy to have, you know, the business being commercial, and he hasn't really had a major problem filling it. And periodically, somebody will leave, and within a couple of weeks, he normally has a replacement tenant. He's done quite well there.
It's a good spot.
Based on the use table, if a property is zoned commercial or zoned business, you can do mixed-use on that property, meaning a combination of commercial and residential, but if it's a residentially zoned piece of property, you can't do mixed-use.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Okay, all right.
Well, I guess my request, Carrie, would be to, if you could put it on the agenda for the next meeting, then I'll come back with a lot more specifics and having done some research and so forth, and I can, I can answer some of the. And I can, I can answer some of the questions that have been raised tonight.
Okay, great. Well, we'll reach back out and get that resolved. Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Okay, good to see you. We'll see you soon.
Okay.
Bye, George.
Okay, let's see, upside down, did I do this? Yes. Okay, great. Everybody still here? Yep. Okay, so getting through our agenda here. Next, why don't we, actually, why don't we go to the Zero Bartlett Street decision? Because that obviously is our most time sensitive issue of all. I want to make sure we get that wrapped up. So that we can, we have a deadline of January 18th, so obviously tonight should be the night that we close on that. So, did everybody have a chance to review the suggested edits from town council?
Yes.
Okay, any additional comments, questions, edits? Just going to open it up to the board to talk through.
Not really. I think I had one question on one of the comments from town council. I emailed it to you, Kathy.
Yep, if you, if you want me to, to talk about that. On, town council had, I had paraphrased my conversation with him. A phone conversation with him in an email to you yesterday or last night. And on page 11, just want to make sure I get this right here. Oh, okay, so on page 11, the second full paragraph down, the last sentence reads, "If it were used as a higher use intensity rather than a generic warehouse, this would trigger the need for a traffic light at Lyman and Bartlett." And town council asked, who, who made that comment? Did it come from their traffic consultant or did it come from a board member? So I went back and then reviewed the tape on, or, you know, the recording of the planning board meeting on October 20th. And three different times, I listened to Rob Nagy's presentation. And Rob said a couple of different things. I noted the time, if anybody wants to, you know, look at where this was on the tape. But he said a couple of times that with a higher intensity use, Lyman and Bartlett could could meet the warrant for a traffic signal. Then also within the same conversation, he talked about with a buildout of the entire, you know, street. If all of those, if all of the existing warehouses were raised to a higher intensity use and build out, it was considered to be build out, that it could meet the warrant. And then another time, and this is all within like a couple of minutes of each other. And then another time, he says that it would probably, I wrote down what he said, probably would meet the warrant, probably would trigger a traffic signal. So, given that, that it's not a definitive that it, that it would trigger, he said it could and it probably would. Town council suggested that that get moved. What? I'm sorry?
I don't, I didn't say.
Oh, someone just said something. So town council suggested that that be moved out of the hearing section and be put into the the findings on page 15. And, and for it to read, the board finds if it were used as a higher intensity, if you, if you, if you want to leave in this about the traffic light, he suggests that it should be moved into the finding section. So, and I wrote the sentence, the board finds if it were used as a higher intensity use rather than a generic warehouse, this could trigger the need for a traffic light at Lyman and Bartlett. So that was.
We should leave it in both places. Like I agree moving it there, but on the first one, we could say, Mr. Nagy said, if it were used as a higher intensity use rather than a generic warehouse, this, you can even change it from would to could trigger the need for a traffic light at Lyman and Bartlett, because he did say it. So if we find it, it makes it, and it's not in the summary, then does it look like we just pulled that information out of a hat? Like, I think we started talking about the traffic light because he brought it up. It just didn't come to us that night to start talking about a traffic light. He brought it up first. So I still, I don't know how the board feels, but I feel like maybe we put it in both places.
So I thought, I thought that Attorney Dinesky was just trying to confirm whether or not Mr. Nagy actually said that by his comment. He wanted to know whose comment it was. And I interpreted as he was wondering, did the board say that or did their, did Mr. Nagy say that? And I think it was, well, I know it was him and Kathy, it sounds like you confirmed that. So would it be okay to just, instead of would, it could be could? Because it sounds like you caught, that was the difference that you noticed, that it was really could.
Yep, yeah, that's, I mean, what Amy's suggesting, I mean, I think is fine if you put it in both places. I think, I, you know, town council, you know, has his comments written on the page. And then I spoke with him on the phone and I just, you know, elaborated on his, you know, what he told me, and that was in the email that was sent to you. So he said, you know, depending on who said it and was it a would or a could? So, so I think if you just change that to, to could. And again, if you leave it just there or if you add it to the findings. I mean, I think it, I think it, you know, adds to your findings.
Yeah, so maybe both places. And when you listen to the tape again, he definitely said could or not would? Because if it does say would, I'd like to leave it as would.
He says probably would.
So maybe we should have probably would.
It, you know, it's not a transcript, so.
I don't know what the, you know, if the judges or lawyers read it, what the difference between could and would? Just like Shal and May. So if he said probably would, then maybe we should have probably would. And then in our findings, the same thing. Or we can have the findings the way you stated it.
Any thoughts on that?
And I wonder if we have to add Mr., is it Nagy? To, Mr. Nagy stated if it were used as a higher intensity use because if Mr. Dinesky had a problem figuring out who said it, then we should make that noted. So whoever reads it next knows who said it.
Okay, so basically it sounds like what's, what's proposed right now is that we, it's in two places. In the findings, it says the board finds, as Kathy has it written here, in the email summary. And then up top, we would have it, Mr. Nay, is it Nagy?
Nagy.
Nagy, okay. Mr. Nagy stated if it were used as a high intensity use rather than a generic warehouse, what's on the table now is this probably would trigger the need for a traffic light. At Lyman and Bartlett. So that's what we have right now is our edit. Does that sound okay to anyone or any thoughts on that?
Makes sense to me.
Sound good? Okay.
And then, then he had, he had two questions relating to two items that you wrote in the decision. On page 10, you, let's see. Page 10 in the third paragraph. Now, again, I don't know if this printed differently for people, but on, on my page 10, in the, the third paragraph, it's towards the bottom of the page. It was added into the decision, it talks about what, what projected benefits the project would bring and past violations in the area. So he says that you need to list what those violations were.
Okay, so for that one, we, I think it's included as part of the, it was just really referencing the, this person that spoke was the one who sent the FedEx violations. So this was in reference to the document, the documents are included in the, if we listed as an included document, could we refer to that to satisfy that request?
If you, if you add a document?
So on number 33 of, let me check the section. So section letters and emails received in opposition. Item 33 has the article with violations highlighted for neighboring Bartlett Street properties. There was the minutes, the conservation commission meeting minutes with the violations highlighted. And the article, Northborough orders FedEx to halt building distribution center. So that was what they were, that's what the past violations refer to. Can we refer to the, that email as?
That email isn't attached to your decision. So I'm, I'm going to guess that I, I think it would be, well, certainly not common practice to attach emails.
Oh, no, no, okay.
But I think, you know, again, he just, you know, simply writes here, specify the type of violations. And then said to me on the phone, you know, if there, if there were past violations either on this property, the specific property or properties in the area, you need to list what those violations were.
Carrie?
Yeah.
It's Fred, how are you? The violation that I believe the conservation commission was talking about happened during the construction of the building. It really had nothing to do with the actual warehouse per se, other than the construction. We had a very large rainfall event the day of the annual town meeting that year and a lot of mud left the site. It wasn't necessarily a violation of the site plan much as it was a construction practices that were not adequately prepared to take care of that amount of rain that came.
So do you think we could simply state that violations related during the construction period or?
It's up to you. I just throw that out there because it's, it doesn't appear that it's something to do with the use of the building much as it is the construction of the site. And the contractor who was working there isn't associated with the company that is proposing Zero Bartlett Street now. It was a separate company. It wasn't FedEx, it wasn't Cetera's, it was another construction company.
Yep, I remember reading that. Okay, any thoughts on that from the board on, should we take it out? Should we expand on it? Considering what Fred just stated?
I guess to me it lacks some merit if it wasn't a related company or use. So I don't, I guess I, I don't see keeping it in there.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so maybe we can end it as what projected benefits the project would bring?
Okay. All right, and then another, a similar, let's see. On page 16, there's a couple of other things too, but on page 16, it's something similar, let me just find out where it is. Okay, at the top of the page under B, it says infringes upon several buffers. And he said, we need to specify what type of buffers that it infringed upon.
Okay, for this one, I'm sorry, let me. For this one, I think we looked at the, the 100 foot setback between residential and industrial was, is that in the, that falls in the parking lot? And then there was some wet, obviously the wetland buffers are falling, one of those parking, then the parking lot as well. And then in the back of the building, it's right up against, again, one of the wetland buffers. So is that enough to?
Okay, so, so you want to, so you want to say infringes upon several buffers?
Why does that make sure other board members remember that as well? Or I just want to make sure that?
Yep.
Well, I do, so I do remember wetlands. I don't recall the residential or not, but my memory is not the best, so.
I said that one because there's a 100 foot residential buffer and it went through the parking lot.
Okay.
So you want to say infringes upon several buffers, including? Including what? Including the 100 foot?
Residential setback buffer. And then did you want to add wetland buffers?
Well, this is, this is where you tell me where, where what buffers.
Carrie. Or Anthony or Michelle or Millie.
Just going to put you on mute for a second.
Yeah, Carrie's muted, so I think she's looking up something. Yeah, trying to get the map out.
Okay, so I have the black and white one. It's always harder to read the hashtags. So the, the residential one cuts like right into the middle of the parking lot, the first. Or I guess if you're coming in towards the area, it's the second set of parking spaces. It just takes a big chunk out of that. And then the back of the building is almost, I wonder if this is updated? No, I'm gonna, no, not this one. I'm gonna have to pull it up. That doesn't look.
I know the building was on the habitat corridor, but that's not probably a buffer. And it might be written in the decision somewhere else.
Yeah.
I don't have my whole map with me.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen for a second so everyone can be on this journey with me. Okay, so. Where's the legend? Okay, so the building's not here. I need one of the building on it because this is the one I'm talking about in the parking lot. But then this goes right into the building. Oops, here we go. Okay, so this is in black and white. Oops, here we go though. No, that's not right. What is this one right here? This is the residential one, Amy, that I think you talked about.
Um, no, I think that's probably the 50 foot setback or something. Because the residential buffer I have on my map is just along the edge on the very like left bottom. I don't think it shows on that one.
The one that I'm looking at says that one that you just referred to is the 100 foot state buffer to resource areas.
Oh, okay. So I have that backwards then.
That's the 100 foot buffer from the wetlands line.
Ah, okay. So that's this line that carries up through here. This one is, what is this one here?
I think that's the habitat.
Priority habitat, yep.
And then this one is?
That's the 100 foot buffer from the wetland on that side of the.
That's still the buffer.
Oh, so I guess it wasn't the setback? Oh, so I guess it wasn't the setback then to residential, I thought we talked about that.
We did, and it is there, but it's, I don't know if it's on that drawing. It's on like, it just cuts off the bottom left of the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
On the drawing that I have, but I don't have my drawings with me. It's probably on that one with the spaces.
Yeah, you're right.
I think it's on the one with the parking spaces.
It's right here?
No, up further. Um, I think you went past it.
This one?
No. Up more. That one, it must be on, see there's, there's a up down little. It's that one with the parking spaces on it, up there, not that one.
Am I going up still?
Uh, no, I think the one that you just had on Carrie prior to this, so if you went, yeah.
Next one, yep. Yeah, that one, but you have to go down, yep.
Oh, there's a setback line.
You can see the hundred foot setback, it says it, there's a little, little dash.
Alright, that goes through.
It just goes over the edge of it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So then those are the buffers I guess we're referring to.
Alright, so including the hundred foot residential setback buffer and the. Um, one hundred foot resource. Buffer.
And is there a protected, was it a habitat?
Priority habitat, I think also.
Priority protected or priority habitat, yeah. Okay, do we have, can I stop, are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Carrie. Oh, no more, Kathy, on the.
No, I just, so you want to add something about a protected habitat buffer?
I don't know, do, is that somewhere else in the decision?
I mean, natural heritage approved the project. So if there were, you know, if there were any endangered species, um, or endangered habitat, they wouldn't be able to approve the project. So. So I don't, I, so I don't know exactly what you're referencing.
So there is almost in the middle of that building. Where this, the, the line that goes deepest into it, I believe is the priority habitat. Line, according to my map.
Is, I mean, there's a legend on this, I can't, I can't see the legend, but there's a legend on the.
Right down here?
Um, it, yeah, it could either be in the lower right hand or the upper right hand.
Oh, maybe you can, do you, oh, okay, hold on.
Looks like it's lower.
No, there's no dash lines on, um.
Nope.
Okay.
So I mean, I think if you, you know, if you, if you just, if you list those two, you know.
Okay. We've at least specified it more clearly anyway, you think that satisfies the edit?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I do. Um. The, do you want me to go over these other ones too, Carrie?
Anything else on that, Anthony, do you feel strongly about including the other one, or? Oops, did, did we lose Anthony? Oops. Oh, we lost Anthony. Alright, so we'll give him a minute to come back in. Okay, so Kathy, do you want to?
Sure, on the same page, um, town council suggests that your A finding. Um, just be moved to the bottom of this list and, um. Because the other findings that B through H are, um, what he labels more as substantive findings. And that, excuse me, those should be listed first. There's no hard fast rule on this that, you know, you can find in a, in a book. But, um, he just suggested that you want to list your substantive findings first. And, um, and then just put A, you know, at the bottom of that.
Okay, so instead of A, it'll be H?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
The, uh, that was on page sixteen also, the, the same as the buffers.
Okay.
And then, um, the other, and I think that's the only one, the, I think I just have one more from him. On page twelve. And Carrie, I can't remember if this relates to an email that you sent me or, or a question that the. That you, maybe you had as a board, um, but where you. Uh, in the findings where we have down towards the bottom of page twelve, where it's the. This relates to when you asked the applicant what other permits they have or have not been issued. And he submitted a paper that listed them. So Carrie, I think you had a question about, you know, since we didn't actually have those documents in our files, should they be included in the, in the, um. In the decision or not, and, uh, Mr. Janeski said that, that it was, um. You know, fine to list them in the decision, but if you wanted to clarify that, um. That you could say the, in front of each one of them, you would say the applicant reported that. The MEPA office completed its review. You know, that number twelve, the applicant reported the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. You know, through the heritage program reviewed the project. Um, and, and, you know, do that for eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen.
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
It sounds good to me, what do you, do you guys agree or?
Yeah, I think that's a good way to do it, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just, it just gets the. You know, a- again, I think it was Carrie and I were discussing this, that these, that the, those physical documents were not submitted as part of your application. Because they're not part of the application, but yet the applicant referenced it and. Discussed it or reviewed it or whatever he did at one of your meetings, and that's in the file. So he thought that's the, the way to address it would just be to say that the applicant reported.
Okay. Um, Anthony, we lost you at a critical moment when you're asking if you feel strongly about including the habitat, priority habitat buffers, is that something? Oops, you're on mute. Can you hear us, are you frozen, he looks frozen.
He does.
Frightened by my question. Okay.
Oh, he's unfrozen now.
Oh, it seems like he just has a bad connection. Alright, we'll come back to that. Okay, um. He actually had another edit within the document, Kathy, that, um, wasn't pulled on an email, but it was a good catch. It was, um, on page, well, it's fourteen for me, but I, it sounds like that's not going to be fourteen for you. Um, it was charge instead of recharge.
Oh, yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's, um.
That's a sixteen.
Is that sixteen when you print it?
I've done the same.
Yeah, it's at the top of it.
Yeah.
Millie, right, that's, yeah, that's how it shows on mine.
Yep.
And then, um. On, for me, it's page seven. I didn't know who put this in, or if it was just a note that we made, it was in, um, Fred's groundwater report. Number nine, there was something, in parentheses, it said the plan should include a sample inspection report. But it, I don't know.
He, uh, town council added that. Um, what page was it again, Carrie?
Me, it's page seven, but it sounds like that's not going to equate to your pages.
It's, no, actually, it's on, it's, it's on my page seven, so yeah, at the bottom, he, town council added that, um.
Oh, okay, so how come it's in parentheses though, should we take it, because we, it says. Shall be amended to include a sample inspection report. So it was already in there, and then it was in parentheses again. So I didn't know if that was somebody's note to include it, or, it doesn't matter, it's not.
Um, no, that, that was, yeah, that was his note to put that in there, let's see, shall be amended.
Sounds redundant.
Um. No, he wa, I think he wanted it in there because Fred's. Because the reference to the groundwater advisory committee was saying that. Um, even though it does say shall, that it shall include a sample inspection report. And. And shall be made part of any approval. And then I think what he's saying is that. So the, so the inspection report is to be made part of the approval, and then he's saying that the plan should. Should include the sample inspection report.
Okay.
And why he put it in parentheses, I don't know, but.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I just thought if somebody's note, not.
I'm just gonna, no, that, that was his, he, yeah, he, he should have put a DD next to it, but.
Okay. And then, um. I just had on page eight for me, it was just applicant looks like a typo. Mr. Robinson reported. That the board, wait, this sentence doesn't make sense.
Miss, uh, you're, you're at the July twenty-first?
Yep.
Planning board meeting. Mr. Robinson reported that the board.
Doesn't make sense.
So, so that, that the applicant.
Wow.
Yeah, that the applicant had submitted, yeah, reported that.
Okay.
The applicant had submitted, yep.
Okay, so then obviously applicant just had the P flipped.
Yep.
Okay, and then my note there highlighted, you can just delete that entire, that was not really meant to be included, it was just a note. Not a, um. I was just telling you why I deleted it from before, I should have done the comment, but I put it there.
So all the, so, so all the yellow comes out on that, Carrie?
Yes, yep.
On, so on the bottom of page eight from Mr. Lopez on.
Oh, so on my side, it just looks like, you know what, I bet on your side, my book pulls it into the sidebar, yours must be all in that entire thing.
Yeah, so, so it has the entire paragraph from Mr. Lopez reviewed the process to date, which included everything. From there on out is, is, um. Is crossed out and highlighted.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I was just, on my side, it's pulled over here, so you must have it down here.
So it's, it's real, it's one to twelve that you, that is to be deleted?
Yep.
He made some changes too, whether people, it was, they were grammatical. Um, I can go over those if you want, but it, it was just to be consistent throughout, um. Like there, whenever we referred to the eight M permit, he added the statute. Or, or the acts of, um. Sometimes we had the M capitalized, sometimes it was small, um, so that's a, that's all been changed for consistency. Um, sometimes board was a capital B, sometimes it's a small B, but. Unless you want me to, I won't go over all of those.
I don't think that's necessary unless anyone.
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else or?
So I just have a quick question, back to the, it's page eight, I think for Kathy and I. When it says at the July twenty-first, twenty twenty planning board meeting. Um, are we saying that Mr. Robin, Robinson reported to the board that the applicant had submitted?
Oh, that probably is what it was, Millie, that makes kind of sense.
Okay, so you wanted to say that Mr. Robinson reported.
To the board.
The board.
That the applicant.
That the applicants, okay.
Yeah, that's what it was. So for the rest of the decision. Unless people have questions, are we just gonna add what was underlined and then take out what was crossed out?
That's, that's what I thought your intent was. Right, because that's a combination of, um, Carrie's edits and your edits, Amy.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, unless somebody else had changes, I just didn't think we had to go down them one by one by one.
Okay, I don't think that we do, but we do have to vote on. Last time we didn't, so do we need to go through a section and vote on what we've amended, or how can we do a full sweep, except as amended?
Yes, I'm shaking my head, I'm sorry, but I'm off, um, I'm not muted, yes, you, you can do that. You, you know, again, you've already, you know, you've already, um, you know, voted on the project, so this is just a vote on the, on the final edits to the decision. So, you know, it would, you could just do a vote, you know, based on the, um, the, the draft that was discussed and reviewed. You know, at tonight's meeting, and then what I will do is, um. Uh, hopefully, an accept all will work here. Um, and then, and make those, you know, few changes that we talked about tonight. And, um, I can send it back out to everybody and then. You know, Carrie arranged for you to come in and sign it.
Well, for this one, I was wondering if it would make sense for everybody on the board to sign. I don't know how board members feel about it.
It, it does, I'll, I'll, I mean, whatever your preference is, and that, that's fine, and if everyone wants to sign it, you know, obviously we'll, we'll, you know, add the signature block. But it doesn't, it doesn't. Add or detract from the, from the decision.
Okay. Does, how does the board feel about signing as well, or?
I'll do whatever. Yeah, whatever is easiest.
I just think if it's not going to add anything to the decision, then probably no purpose in doing it. Unless you feel otherwise.
Michelle, any thoughts?
All running into technical difficulty tonight.
Okay.
I actually agree with Anthony, if it's not going to add any value, I don't think it makes a difference whether it's the chair's signature or all five board members' signatures.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine then. Okay, so.
Trying to be COVID safe here, so.
Yes. Um, alright, so, and Kathy, if you have any trouble with, um, accepting or rejecting or cross outs, I'm happy to help, it's a lot, so just let me know.
Uh, oh yeah, thank you. I'm just saying, base, based on like four of us, you know. If, um. If Microsoft works, it'll be.
Okay, and then, um. And well, once you do that, if you don't mind sending it back my way, then I can just read it.
Yep, absolutely, um, I, I probably, um, just based on what I've got going on tomorrow, Carrie, I, I may be able to do it by the end of the day. But if not, on Thursday.
Okay, um, great, so we'll be in plenty of time for our January eighteenth deadline.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then we need a motion to, um, approve the. Zero Bartlett, do we have to do the whole, let's see. I'm gonna scroll up to the top here. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the decision as amended for the. Special permit with site plan approval for zero and three oh one Bartlett Street?
They're moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote, uh, Millie?
Aye.
Beanie? Was that an aye?
Yep, aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, so we have the decision approved and we'll get that signed and submitted as soon as we can. Okay, great, so moving on in the agenda here, we have, um, the minutes from ten twenty and twelve sixteen. So why don't we go backwards, um, starting with twelve sixteen, did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the sixteenth?
Yep.
Okay, are there any amendments?
Yeah, I had a couple of changes and I think Kathy emailed them out.
Let's see. The minutes. On the sixteenth. So the gist of it, Amy, is you were just clarifying a few things that you had stated?
Yep.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on Amy clarifying her own statements? No.
No.
Okay, it looks fine to me, Michelle, are you okay with that? Um, I just had an amendment on page. Five. At the very, the very top paragraph, it just said that the, um, EDU bylaw would be placed, it sounded like we were saying. The entire bylaw would be placed on. the entire bylaw would be placed on hold, but um, what we've talked about was um. You know, the the full extent of the bylaw we put on hold, but we still were talking about making it by right in RA and RB. So that piece was still moving forward. Whether or not it's important to say, I don't know, but it's just a minor. And that was it for me. Any other amendments?
No.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the 12:16 minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor? Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, moving on to 10:20. So um, I had sent out, we didn't get to go over them last time because uh, we were nearing the end and I think we had a lot of edits to the minutes. And when I sent over um, my amendments, it was a bit with the notation that I think we all talked about not wanting really long minutes and we liked how Melanie produced that last batch. It was good, you know, she had nice summaries for it. But we talked about whenever we have a hearing and specifically when we have deliberation, that we just wanted a bit more detail. So that's why in this case I went back and, you know, watched the hearing again, pulled in some detail that especially just um, supported our deliberation. Um, we also talked about, um, you know, just being careful of quoting other members. So I did try to avoid that. Um, but there were a lot of points made that I thought were really good points and it just sounded like it was only me saying stuff and we really had a good discussion with everybody. However, if there's a member that feels like you were quoted and you don't remember saying it or agree with it, that's fine. Um, my only thought there was we, you know, if we remove the attribution of, you know, taking your name out of it, but the comment may still be a valuable comment. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to look and, you know, didn't, thought the edits were okay, or had some questions or things that, you know, if you didn't want your name somewhere, that's okay too.
I thought they were good.
And Carrie too, or for all the board members, the, what Amy did, you know, Amy and I sent that around, the Amy had made edits on um, on top of Carrie's edits. So the.
Mine are red on mine. And Carrie's were blue, so I don't know.
Oh, you just had a couple, Amy.
Yeah.
Um, I, I couldn't tell you whose was, I, I, I think, again, when I, how I printed it, Carrie's are red. And.
I'll share my screen to make it.
And Amy's are blue.
I just have to run for a couple of minutes. I'll be right back. But I agree, I read them both, so I agree with them. But I have to run out for a sec.
So um, it looks like up here, it's just changing um, a clear and death explanation to a summary of the memo. Um, the blue is me. Um, and our bylaws do not recommend storing snow in landscaped areas, because it doesn't bode well for the trees and landscaping. This is Amy here. This is a comment she's making. I'm gonna actually zoom in a little bit. There we go. Okay.
I'm trying to follow where that is and I don't.
Oh, I'm sharing. Can you see Millie, or are you trying to look at your own copy?
I'm trying to look at my own copy. So you're with the.
So this looks like Amy's clarifying a statement that she made regarding frontage. I don't know if there's anything else here. Hold on. I think that's it. Okay, so it looks like those areas for Amy, and she's not here to clarify anything, but so far, does anybody have anything that they don't like or want clarified?
Oops. Carrie, I had some changes to two paragraphs that I, I think it's a board we were talking about on page seven that I didn't get to send over.
Okay.
Mostly like grammatical and then just talking it more as instead of like it was asked, the board asked. And I was wondering if we could review these and then make these changes, or do you want me to send them over?
Uh, whatever you want. Is it easier for you? Do you want to share your screen, or what's easier for you?
I'm not as organized as you tonight, so I can't share my screen.
Okay, so do you want me to pull the minutes up and then you can tell me where it is?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty, even if Kathy wants to make a notation, it's not a lot. Um, it's probably like four or five sentences, but it just rewards them that I think it makes the conversation we're having um, sound smoother when you're reading them.
Okay, Kathy, is that easy for you if Michelle just reads it, or do you want me to pull up the minutes?
You're on mute, Kathy.
Um, uh, no, you don't, I was gonna say you don't have to pull them up, Carrie, but if you could just tell me um, where you are, Michelle, everything that I I printed, there's like, you know, 15 pages of minutes for this meeting.
Okay, so this is after where they start to talk about um, the snow and the snow removal. And it says Ms. Gillespie noted. And my numbering says page seven, but it may be off because a lot of times with the edits, it puts more into 15 pages.
Is this about the mitigation piece?
Yeah, it talks about the ways to mitigate the impact.
Yep.
Well, can you, can you um. Yeah, it's just not, it's just not lining up with.
Numbers or anything.
Right.
Yeah.
So the top of the page, oh, actually, if it's not lining up, then forget it. I was gonna say.
Yeah.
All right, well, do you want me to type it here, Michelle, and then I can send it to Kathy?
Yeah, so type it here. So, okay, so I was going, Ms. Gillespie noted the planning board.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Oh, why can't I edit those?
I can't.
Okay.
Okay, no, Ms., go ahead.
Ms. Gillespie noted the planning board. Okay, was looking for ways to mitigate the huge impact. Okay, okay, that's good. And then period. We kept hearing that the answer was no, comma, that we cannot mitigate. The message from staff is that police or DPW cannot impact, cannot mitigate the impact and do not have the resources to offset the impact to the neighborhoods, roadways, and safety. The impact is too enormous and the town does not have the resources to mitigate the impact to the environment or safety. Now, just just reworded it, but it was pretty choppy the way it was submitted before. Or safety period. Yeah, and so that whole paragraph, you can, you just reworked it, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you can take that out. And then on the next paragraph, you want, it talks about the storm basins. You should say the board.
Um, this right here?
Yep.
Okay.
The board asked who will manage and ensure all storm basins are properly cleaned out. And um, and they will submit their reports. Meaning the applicant will submit their reports. And the next one is, uh, the town of Northboro does not have the resources either to monitor or mitigate the storm basins without the ability to monitor or manage um, these storm basins. The impact is too large.
You said that one again, the town of Northboro does not have the resources.
That does not have, right here, what do you got right here? That does not have the resources either to monitor or mitigate the storm bases without, what I wrote down, without the ability to monitor or manage these storm basins is what I put. The impact is too large. And you also talk about that in the decision as well. So that ties into the decision. And then the only other one, which I think is, it says page nine, but that could be too over. It's after where we talk about the number of trips. It says that there's 1,100 trips per day. Hmm, from a little further up, uh, hold on. You guys slowed down a little bit. You're going too fast. Um, you see what says vote for the special permit? You want to go down to that section? Okay, stop right there. Okay, see, we see it as Ms. Gillespie.
Mm hmm.
So you want to say Ms. Gillespie noted, take out that. When you see the response from the residents, you see how the traffic report said one thing, but the residents were seeing something very different, period. Um, she added that with such a large impact, I'm just repeating it. Um, you would then look to see what would be done to improve the infrastructure, but nothing was presented to show how the infrastructure could be improved relative to the impact.
Okay, so that.
Nothing was presented to the board. Yep. To show, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so those are your three edits?
Yeah.
All right, so Kathy, I'm gonna send that to you in an email. You saw where they're located and you could kind of. Okay, so Michelle's clarifying a few of her own statements. Anything else? Well, I think I was good. Okay. Did we lose Amy?
The only other thing, Carrie, just for clarification, and I don't know how you worded this, but on page seven, where it's right below mine, where we're still talking about some of the catch basins and stuff and the storm water. You wrote, um, you said Ms. Martin asked, how much can we catch? Are we not, what are we not catching? Do you think the reader's gonna understand what you mean by catch or catching?
Um, no, probably not.
So I don't know if you wanted to clarify that. Do you see what I mean in the paragraph? It also is a high level operation, inspection, and maintenance activities that are required to avoid negative impact to the groundwater, and we don't have the ability to enforce it.
Yep.
And then you make a statement of how much can we catch and what are we not catching?
Mm hmm.
So I don't know if there's a better word you want to think about. How much can we? Maybe Fred can help you with that, because he understands all the storm water drain, drainage and the catch basins. I don't know if that's what you actually said, but when I was reading.
No, I don't think Fred said that.
No, you said it. I'm saying maybe Fred can help you with summarizing. I know what you're saying by how much can we catch. I don't know if you actually said that. I know what you're saying is that stormwater basins are collecting all the runoff.
Mm hmm.
How much can we collect?
Yeah.
Well, maybe just take it out.
I think your statement is good before it, because I understood what you were trying to say. And then I think that was just part of your comments afterwards.
Okay, so just take.
Just to make sure the reader understood what you were talking about.
No, it's a good point. So I don't think it changes anything if we take that out. I asked, how much can we catch? What are we not catching? I just expressed concern. We can't ensure the safety, which pretty much
Yeah.
reemphasizes that. So if we just take up, Ms. Martin asks, how much can we catch? What are we not catching? And it just may read a little smoother.
Or you could say, what are we not catching in the runoff? Something like that. Or in the stormwater drains.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind if we just strike it. It's okay with me, just if I express concern.
I'm okay either way. I didn't know if you wanted to change it.
I don't remember exactly the path I was going down, so I don't mind. If it's unclear, I don't, it's okay with me to just cut it. Okay, anything else? All right, we don't have, Amy, are you there? I lost Amy for a minute. Let's see. Okay, well, why don't, um, we still have a majority to vote on the minute so that we don't have to, we didn't, we, did everybody agree with Amy's changes? Is that okay?
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to um, accept the minutes as, for 10:20 as amended?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for 10:20 as amended.
Okay, second. Okay.
Second.
So first, um, motion's made to accept minutes as amended. It's been seconded. A, let's see, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Amy is um, not with us right now, so we will just go by that majority. Okay. Let's see, while we're waiting for Amy to come back, why don't, one other thing on our agenda was just in terms of the discussion on traffic. When we last talked, Kathy, I don't know if you had a chance to talk, get a final answer from CMRPC. We talked about maybe February 16th is the target date of hearing from them, or any updates from that?
Yes, February 16th is when I've scheduled Central Mass to come in.
Okay, and so they're gonna talk, the things we discussed before, just the traffic, regional, etc.
Yep, yep, they're gonna, they're gonna sort of frame it into two areas. Um, the regional aspect of just, you know, sort of traffic in general and um, what they are familiar with as far as what other, some other communities are doing. Um, and then um, specifically talk about, you know, the conditions that um, you know, may or may not, you know, that this board may or may not want to consider, so. And then from what I recall at the last meeting, um, you would like to invite other boards to attend?
Yeah, you're welcome, sure.
Right, you wanted to invite the board of selectmen, or I, I, I mean, just how do I frame it? You know, who do you want? I mean, do you want an invitation to go out to people, or is this just gonna be on the agenda, you know?
Yeah, um, how do board members feel? Is this something we should put out some sort of formal invitation, or just put it out there that we're having it? Anybody's welcome? Do we wanna? Have we done this in the past where we've seen a good format work, or any thoughts?
I mean, the, the only thing that, that um, that I mean, I've done in the past is, you know, joint meetings um, between boards. And um, which reminds me, the, the board of, the zoning board of appeals will be at your meeting next week, uh, excuse me, January 19th. And um, um, I had already posted your January 19th agenda, but depending on, you know, if you want to, at the end of the discussion tonight, whether you want to specifically add George on, or just, you know, lump that into the zoning amendments. And then if you um, uh, I, I need to post an agenda for the border, I mean, excuse me, for the zoning board of appeals also.
So um, any board thoughts on best way to handle?
Why, why couldn't we just send out a broadcast email to the various boards that it would be applicable to, and just say that, you know, you're invited to attend?
And welcome to, if people have questions, I want to. And welcome to, if people have questions they want to ask. I just want people to feel like they don't have to be expect, I mean, that, I'm happy to have people be a part of it. I-
Yeah.
I feel like if we make it a formal joint meeting, it makes it harder logistically because each board has to then manage minutes and things like that. But if they, it's just, uh-
I mean, they, they may choose to send a, a, you know, a liaison or a rep.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thought.
Okay, so we'll invite the, um, the Board of Selectmen. Um, just, I mean, you know, you tell me. I don't want to leave anyone out. I don't want to read minds either. So Board of Selectmen, DPW Director?
I would say DPW, sure.
Yep. I would say, um, safety, police and fire.
Yep.
Yeah. You might even see the ZBA members if they want to.
Yeah.
And one thing I was wondering, Kathy, and I know, so I feel like this is, um, a meeting where it's sort of reactive towards like traffic impact that you're seeing now. I was wondering also, are, are they getting anything that's talking about just some things that they're seeing down the line in the next five to 10 years about transportation, like autonomous vehicles, how that's impacting, um, the use of drones, not necessarily on your roadways, but in your airways? Are they seeing any of that, or is that anything that's like coming before them where, um, you know, they're starting to see as discussions taking place that town should be-
I, I didn't specifically, you know, discuss that with them. You know, you, you had originally, you know, as a board focused this on, you know, traffic and traffic mitigation.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you can certainly ask those questions, you know, of them, of, of the staff. I mean, there's one staff member, you know, coming, so.
Yeah. I would think that, um, what, what brought this on was that those huge facilities that are the shipping facilities and the, with all the trucks, you can do autonomous vehicles now, so they might be using autonomous vehicles in the future, as well as, you know, other areas of the company, country, they're starting to see drone technology going from one facility to another. I was just curious on if they're hearing or seeing anything.
And, um, do you want to, given that, you know, I'm, you know, I'm assuming this could be, well, I, I, I don't know how you want to structure it. I would think you'd want to do this no more than an hour, but do you want to start your meeting at six o'clock that night, um, in case you have, you know, other business? Uh, you know, there's still time for people to, um, submit for this meeting. Uh, and you also have, you know, two public hearings that you're probably gonna be continuing, just because of the, you know, length of the projects.
Does that work for everybody? Six to, maybe six to seven? Michelle, I think you are sensitive to the workday.
Um, that's fine with me. Is this on the, this is the next meeting we're doing this on?
Uh, no, this is February 16th. January 19th, you are starting at six also.
That's fine. That's okay.
So the other thought I'm thinking, there could be, so not only could there be a lot of comments from other boards and board members, how would, there would probably be a lot of residents who'd be interested in hearing. I'm certainly, I'm guessing they would, a lot of residents who would like to express opinions and thoughts too. So I'm just trying to think of how we, an hour's not a whole lot of time to get through a lot of information. I just think there might be a lot of interaction and I'm just trying to figure out what might be the cleanest way to do this so it's productive for all.
Is Sujatha, Sujatha Kathy that's coming?
Yes.
Okay. Is she doing a present, do you think she's doing a presentation, like a formal presentation, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I went over, you know, the, what the board's thought process was as far as wanting to, you know, discuss what Central Mass is aware of as far as what other communities are doing, um, you know, in the region, um, dealing with whether it's, you know, cross dock facilities, distribution centers, um, you know, that's, again, you know, this, this isn't, these warehouses are not unique to Northbro. And I know everybody understands that. So that, you know, she's gonna gather, you know, some information from, um, what they're aware of in other towns. And then I asked her to then specifically focus on, um, some suggestions that, that they have seen be successful in other communities as far as the types of conditions that you could apply for. I mean, that you could apply to, to, um, you know, to applicants. But I don't really think, you know, that, I don't think you just want to let, um, the discussion loose on one staff member from the Regional Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's not what, and that, well, at least I certainly didn't frame that to her, that this was, you know, that she was going to be, um, you know, looked at as, you know, how do you, how, you know, how can she solve these traffic, you know, situations in, in Northbro? I mean, you, you know, the, the DPW, the town engineer, the, the, and the police chief in particular are, the three of them are working, you know, daily on this.
Right.
So I think, you know, things that, I mean, I don't, I don't think, and, and again, I didn't frame this to her, that this was, that this was going to turn into a discussion about, um, you know, what, what, um, like, you know, letting Northbro residents, you know, um, you know, just have this open-ended dialogue with her. You know, she was coming very specifically to talk to the board. I mean, of course, it's a public meeting, but, you know, to talk to the board about their experience with what's, you know, going on in other towns.
Yep. So maybe, um, we could just put a, would it make sense to put a call out for any, people could send questions in for consideration that if we thought was relevant to the conversation we're having, maybe board members could ask. I mean, I hear you're saying we don't want to drill down into a specific dialogue about issues with specific-
Yeah, I, I don't, Carrie, I don't think this is the, and again, this, you know, and, and perhaps I have a completely different understanding of what you all wanted this conversation to be, because it's, you know, central, you know, the, the transportation planner from Central Mass is not who is going to be, you know, she's not on the ground here in Northbro. I mean, that's, that's, you know, our, our town engineer, our DPW director, our police chief, I mean, of course, our fire chief too, but as far as, you know, traffic issues. So, you know, if, if you want to have some sort of di, very specific dialogue about, you know, specific Northbro issues, you know, that, that Sujatha has no idea about and no idea where these streets are. And, you know, that, I didn't see that that's what this conversation or this discussion was about.
Yep.
I thought it was a higher level, um, about traffic and what other communities are doing. And to share that information with you.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if we'd get questions that were more high level, like what, you know, what does the state offer? Are there different grants? And maybe she's already covering that. Or I know residents before have asked about, I forget, was it chapter 90 or something? And I know there was an answer about chapter 90 that maybe didn't fit what we were doing, but it seems like they've have, residents have asked about higher level programs, that maybe is worth hearing from Sujatha, but not necessarily the street level questions kind of thing. I don't know. How do, how do board members feel in general about, you know, what kind of discussion we want to have?
I, I think this is really just a good sort of baseline information starting point that if she can give us a lot of the, um, things that other towns are doing, how do, what can our takeaway be? And then maybe at some other point, come back to have a discussion that is more involved and in depth. I don't think, I think, Kathy, you're right when you're saying that this is not solving Northbro's issues. I think it's a starting point.
Right. And I, and I don't necessarily, um, you know, that's, you're, you're taking, you're taking on an awful lot as a, as a planning board.
Yeah.
You know, that, it's, it's not, the, I mean, the planning board can place conditions. You have a very limited, um, scope and, and authority about, you know, placing conditions on special permits. Um, so I, I think this, this traffic, this, you know, some of this traffic discussion that you're contemplating, you know, is a, is a much larger issue and not necessarily with the planning board.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, any other thoughts?
Would she know anything too about mitigation? Like sometimes these facilities with a lot of traffic come in and, and there can be mitigation that other towns are getting that maybe, if it ever happened again, we would be open to, you know, knowing where we could look.
Yeah, that's, that's part of what, what she's going to talk about, Amy, is what, what other towns have done, what's been successful, what hasn't been, you know, what, what you as a board could possibly, you know, you know, be asking for, you know, in the future.
Okay. That's great.
I actually, um, don't have a problem with some residents asking questions. Um, you may not want to have 30 or 40 of them asked, but I don't have a problem because I think even at a high level, I think there's a craving within this community to start a discussion, even maybe if it's at this level. So even like Millie said, if this is your beginning level and it expands out to more, the Master Plan Implementation Committee meets with them. I even think, um, feedback from some neighbors or from people who see it, I don't, I don't see it as an issue. I think it, I think whatever we bring to her or the discussion, whether it's just, you know, you don't want to go on for two or three hours, an hour, an hour and a half is good. I think it's okay. I think, you know, when you, when you see all the emails that are posted in our email boxes about traffic, I think there's a craving within the community to have a discussion about it. I think it's good to have all the boards invited. And I don't have a problem with allowing in, you know, two, three, four, five residents to make comments. I think, you know, if you, as long as you say that they're not repeating the same thing over again, I think it'd be valuable advice to have this go back to Central Mass and help the town in the future. Just my comment. I do think an hour's gonna go by really quick. And I think everybody's willing to get a comment, including people from other boards. So maybe you compromise and make it an hour and a half.
I wonder if we should do it a different night than a planning board meeting, because it's a lot when we, because it almost is like a public meeting with other groups, like, could we do it in an off week where it's all the boards and the, some residents and, because you were talking, there might be a lot of hearings at night too. Sometimes it's a lot to take in all in one night.
I, in, I, I think, I think you've got two very distinct conversations going on here tonight. And one of them involves very, on the local level, with your Board of Selectmen, with your DPW Director, with your town engineer, with your police chief. That's, that's a very, very different conversation than what is going to happen with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on a very high level with our local planning assistant hours, where she is, um, again, cannot possibly have the knowledge and the background of specific Northbro traffic problems. Um, so I think, you know, again, what I had talked with her or what I had understood you all to want to hear from Central Mass was very high level, what's, what's going on in the region with traffic? How are other towns dealing with warehouse development? How are other towns dealing with, you know, um, uh, mitigation as far as, you know, maybe intersection reconstruction or, um, and then, and then specifically talking about, you know, our, like, sort of what have you seen work and not work in the region? That, that's a very different conversation than what, than, than what I'm hearing.
So what I can do, actually, I, um, I have a, the CMRBC board meeting is on Thursday, so I'll see Sujatha then. And, you know, I'll just, I can always relay to her the conversations we, we just had and, um, just sort of see if she's done something in the past that maybe helps us to guide this in a compact way and without kind of getting too, you know, street level and keeping it the high level we need, but then also just making sure as we have other groups participate to just be sensitive to how to keep it a compact type meeting and accomplish what we're trying to do. So I could always just briefly mention that to her Thursday and then by, we still have a, we have another meeting, two meetings in between. So maybe the next meeting, we just kind of settle of where this lands. Is that too late? That's a month still out.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, I, you know, she, she'll need time to, you know, prepare her presentation and so forth, but, you know, so, I mean, a couple of weeks out, you know, I think would be, you know, fine.
Yeah. All right. So that's great though. I think that's, I'm really excited for that. That's good. And it sounds like for hours wise, we have enough for that. And then Kathy, you mentioned the need for some, um, time allocated to, was it open space as well?
Uh, yeah, we haven't been able to figure that out yet, um, because of, um, uh, uh, one of our staff members that's working on the open space plan has been out. Um, so that still has to be figured out. But, you know, we're just, we're just looking at a few hours for, for this, you know, for her prep time and then the hour, you know, hour and a half at the meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, any other thoughts before we move on?
Um, I just had a quick question about the, with the traffic concerns. I know that Bob had mentioned a noise study, part one and part two. Did anything come in? And do we just wait till everything's done to get it? Or would we get anything from part one early to look at?
It's coming in soon. Um, I was told just before Christmas and it would be in here by the end of the year. And I was told the person generating the final report was on vacation between Christmas and New Year's, so I'm hoping, hoping this week.
Okay.
As I've said before, the noise study isn't gonna show you much at the beginning because phase one of the noise study is when everything is quiet and nothing is going on. Um, where you will see any kind of a difference is when the buildings are up and running fully. And that's a little bit of a gray area, uh, because each building, um, as far as I, last I heard, um, only one building has any kind of activity in it. Um, so it's probably gonna be a while before there's, you know, everybody talks about the noise study, but there's not gonna be a lot to see.
Right.
Because the initial noise study is basically a baseline quiet. Okay? So, um, you know, that, that should be on its way in.
Okay.
All right?
Great. Okay, so moving on to bylaws. So the last time we met, we received information, um, staff, Kathy and Bob and Fred, I didn't, Fred may have been included as well. The, you sent back different recommendations for the bylaws, and then we're gonna come back tonight and sort of further hash that out and, um, you know, figure out where we stand, what we'll be going to town meeting with and all of that. So why don't we get started? Um, I think the last time we decided, Anthony, for yours, did we, we decided not to move forward on your originals that you had proposed?
That's correct, yes.
So you no longer have any, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. It's probably what you were just gonna say, Carrie. I just wanted to get verification from that tonight that it's the, the signs and the duplexes?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a total withdrawal for both?
Yes.
And I think the sentiment on the duplexes that we talked about last time was that it was something that we wanted to watch as a trend and over the next year, maybe it's something we take a closer look at based on what's happening. I think we talked, we went back and forth on, um, market conditions and things like that. So it may be something we revisit next year.
Yeah, I think we decided that, um, that we had time to, to learn more and see how the market is responding over the next couple of years.
Okay.
Can I comment about the signage? I think, um, that would be a great, I mean, Amy sits on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but I think one of the things that, um, it was charted was to, to start that downtown implementation committee. And um, I think that's an excellent thing to put right on their list to discuss. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So not to put that completely to bed, but if you want a formal group to talk about it, that's the group and they can start working with, um, all those businesses and probably pick out some sort of master plan, especially if the board feels that downtown or a specific area of town they want to work on. the board feels that downtown or a specific area of town they want to work on.
Good idea. Okay, so then that was it for you, Anthony. Millie, you have withdrawn the sober houses in light of needing more information and Bob working on some of the things that he's looking at and just a little too early to come up with a bylaw. And Bob, it sounded like even at the level of some sort of site plan, that we're not even at that point yet to put that into place.
Yeah, not yet. My, my main concern, to be honest, is for the safety of the people in that building. And zoning and use and everything else is coming in second. So I do have a letter stating that the owner has done some technical things to the building to help with the safety of its occupants, which is a good thing. I'm hoping to get in there probably early next week to go and, and do a follow-up inspection to see what they did do. You know, basic life stuff, you making sure the windows open, make sure there's carbon and smoke detectors, you know, the real, real basic stuff, you know, make sure the unsafe wiring has been taken care of. That, that, that's my first hurdle with that is make sure the occupants are safe. You know, and, and, you know, I am still investigating the use and occupancy with the building code. This, this still, you know, at the state level, it's still up for discussion.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, not quite sure where it's going at this point.
Okay. Okay, Amy, did you wanna talk, Michelle, you don't have anything this year that you're focused on?
No, I don't.
Okay, Amy, do you want to talk about what you have right now?
Sure. I'll start with contractor yard because I have it up on my screen. Can, I'm gonna share it. Let me see here. Okay. So I just, I went back to after our discussion last month and I just wanted to add some things that we wanted to update the definition of the contractor's yard, if everybody agrees, and Michelle had brought up some ideas. So under the definition, I added contractor's yard, landscaping yard, storage yard. Because to me and, and ask, tell me if I'm wrong, a contractor's yard is, is the same or similar to a landscaping yard. Landscapers leave their equipment and then take it out to job sites. Wouldn't that be similar to a contractor's yard? I didn't find a lot of towns that, that broke out landscaping yards from contractors' yards, but so I can include it in the title, but I don't have to include it. I know Michelle had mentioned she didn't want to leave them out. The definitions I found called it a contractor's yard, a storage yard. So the main purpose of my bylaw was to, it mainly pulls out the sales aspect of it because we have, I think if you have my old sheet, we have other definitions in our bylaws that include the sales. We have commercial greenhouses. We have wholesale trade. We have sale of grain, lumber, construction and garden supplies. Like our contractor's yard now talks about a lumber. So what I found in the other towns that I went to was that the contractor's yard didn't talk about sales, because if you include sales, then we have two definitions that people could come in and use either or. And it gets tricky. I think they need to be separated. So I just took our bylaw and used, and I added this first sentence that I found in Ashland, Grafton and Clinton. And even Shrewsbury was very similar. So I added their sentence. I left in the middle part, which we had. And what I see from a lot of the other definitions too, is it said, "All outside storage shall be screened from view from the street" and abutting properties. So the main purpose of the contractor's yard is for a contractor to be able to store their trucks and, and stuff. And Michelle had mentioned commercial condos. Do we add that as a separate? That's a premise used by more than one building contractor. Or do we include it under contractor's yard? I use the same definition, but I called it commercial condo, condo, which is a contractor's yard that's actually used by more than one building contractor.
Can I just point out something about the condo has nothing to do with zoning? Condominiums is, is a form of ownership. So it's a real estate term. It has nothing to do with land use or, or zoning. And, and Amy, I just want to clarify. So what your, what your, what your goal is, is right now, a contractor's yard in, in our definition, they can do wholesale and retail. It's not just about storing equipment, but you want to make it so that a contractor's yard is just about storing equipment? And not, so they can't run their business out of it, out of?
Well, I mean, I think they could, you know, people, contractors that sell mulch to, they install at people's homes, but they don't have a yard where people come in and buy mulch to go. Like, I guess that's what I'm trying to separate. A contractor's yard is, from all the other towns that I read, seems like a premise where a building contractor or subcontractor stores the materials they use to do a job. They could sell like mulch to somebody, but they're not, they're not like a sales shop where people come in and buy mulch. We have that listed already. Wholesale trade.
But you couldn't go there as a, as a resident if it's wholesale.
What about sale of grain, lumber, construction or garden supplies?
No, if, if something is, if something is wholesale, that, you know, that's, that's not retail.
Right. Well, I have three of them. There's commercial greenhouses, wholesale trade, and then the third one is a business, which is sale of grain, lumber, construction and garden supplies, but it's not wholesale. It's a business engaged in the sale of grain, lumber, garden supplies, related agriculture or construction products inside a building, including the sale and storage of products outside the building as an accessory use. Like, we already have have a definition for selling products like that, like say Zeko. I would think they would fall under the sale of grain, lumber, construction or garden supplies because they have mulch and dirt and rocks. But they're not a yard where they have different contractors that come in and park all their trucks. Like, I, I picture the two definitions as separate. And there are some contractors' yards who have, you know, the bays with the mulch that they use for their job site, but they're not selling mulch where people come in and, and buy it. It's not like retail sales. It's more of like a service.
Amy, I got a quick question on that.
Sure.
You're talking about wholesale, sales only. And, you know, who's, who's to prevent these guys from selling a bucket to a guy in a pickup truck for his own yard on a Saturday morning? Because you know that's gonna happen.
I don't know what you're talking about, I guess.
Are these already in the by, these are?
Yeah, these are already in the bylaw. The ones that I'm showing now, C, D and E, those are already in our bylaws.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, what you're proposing.
Up here?
Yeah, where you say you can't sell anything to anybody else, you know, it's, say somebody stockpiles mulch. Okay, and it's for their own company's use. Who's to say they're not gonna sell a couple of buckets to a guy to a pickup truck on a Saturday?
Nobody, but as, as you can do that from your house, too. Like, I don't think it has to be part of the definition.
That's the thing, you're talking about a wholesale situation, which, which I understand. But I, I guess enforcement's could be an issue. The, the other thing I'd like to point out, your new definition where it says the first top line, premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor. I would probably take out building and just leave contractor. Okay, because it's not just some guy building houses. It could be a plumbing shop. It could be, you know, landscaper, could be something else. So I would just take building out. Because building is, is gonna, yeah, I, I think that's gonna be a little better. Is that what, because building contractor seems to constrict it to just building.
Sure.
Contractor kind of leaves it open for the other, for the other trades. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And sort of along the lines of, of Bob's questions, what and, and what we talked about, I think all, all staff members talked about at the last meeting is is I, I, I don't, I don't understand. And, and, you know, and hopefully you can help me, Amy, so that, so that we can better formulate a bylaw as opposed to just taking things out of other towns' bylaws? Because that's not really, that's not how you write a bylaw. So what, I, I, I still don't know, I, I still haven't heard anyone identify what it is that we're trying to fix. So that, so that's my first question is, what, what is it that we're trying to fix with our present definition? Is it, is it to do, you know, and it, and it makes no difference to me what it is. I just need to know
Right.
what it is. So is it, does, does the board want to eliminate contractors' yards in town? Does the board want to make a contractor's yard only for the storage of equipment and no, no business? So like, so like the, you know, electrician can't run his business out of a, a contractor's yard or a landscaper can't run his business out of a?
No, that's not what I'm talking about. And actually, if you read our bylaw today, it says lumberyard, construction, contractor's yard or other open air establishment for storage, distribution or sale at wholesale, like that isn't even, doesn't even include a building. It's an open air establishment. So I mean, what we've been using contractors' yards now for are totally different, probably wouldn't even fall into that definition. I just want more specific, clear, black and white definitions, so it's not a catch-all for everything. I think if you're a lumberyard, you're not the same thing as a contractor yard. I feel like a contractor yard, the way I read it, is a place where you're a contractor, you're like an electrician, you're a landscaper and you store your equipment or mulch or lawn mowers. But I don't think it's a place that you are an open air establishment where you're selling all sorts of products. I think they're two separate things.
So, so just, so under, so under that, Amy, and again, like I said, as staff, this makes no
Right, yeah.
difference to, I mean, this is not, you know, our town. This is your community. But, but we want to make a bylaw that's gonna work.
Right.
So, so is what you're saying is, is you want a different definition than what's in the zoning bylaw today for contractor's yard? And you want a contractor's, this is what at least I'm hearing.
Yep.
And you, and you want a contractor's yard to be a, a more of a storage facility? And then if that contractor has a business, well, I mean, of course he has a business if he's got equipment. He has to have another piece of property to run that business from.
No, I wasn't saying that.
So, so where would he run his, where would he run his business from then?
Well, right now, they have buildings, like this contractor's yard, like if you think of Dave Varan in Marlboro, he has a contractor's yard. And I've only driven by it, but there's some mulch there, there's trucks there, there's a garage there. And I don't know if he has a little office, but usually too, he works out of his house. You call him and he makes appointments.
He, he has an office in Marlboro.
Yep.
At, at his yard. So, so I'm, so do you want that or not for Northborough?
No, I don't mind if they have an office at their yard. But I, I think what I see with the old contractor's yard definition is it is a lumberyard and all sorts of distribution and sales. So it's almost a catch-all for everything. And then it's used in the future to grandfather them in everywhere. So anybody can say there's a contractor's yard and say, okay, by default, I'm now in industrial use and now I can do this. I think a contractor's yard needs to be more black and white on what they're doing. Like, I know, like, they can have definitely a building there and a garage and store all their equipment there. That's what, but it shouldn't also turn into a a sales yard. Like, would you say Lowe's in Home Depot are contractor's yards? No, those are retail.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's no question that those are retail.
Right. But if you look at Del Greco, he sold bricks. That was retail, too. And now because we had something in our definition that says you can have sales, he turned into a contractor's yard.
No, see, this is where, and Carrie, I don't know how far you want this conversation to go because this, this is, this is what I'm trying to get at, Amy, is what, is your problem a contractor's yard or is your problem with grandfathering in Massachusetts? Because we're talking about two entirely, completely different concepts. So if you're talking about, well, actually, we don't even use the term grandfathering anymore. If you're talking about pre-existing non-conforming, that is something through the state law. And, and, and that's not, you know, I, I, I know you have an issue with how staff has has defined certain businesses in this town, but that's, that's, you don't, you don't attack the zoning bylaw to, to try to change that.
Well, when I went to the
We need to identify the problem. So if the problem is, is that, is that you think, you know, that, that non-conformity needs to be looked at, that, that's a completely different issue than saying, you know, we need to change the definition of what a contractor's yard is.
I have a different bylaw for non-conformity, but for this one, when I went, attended the ZBA meeting, even Bob said, well, a problem is our contractor's yard definition is so vague. And then the ZBA a couple of times said the contractor's yard definition is so vague. I am trying to make the contractor's yard definition not so vague. So it, it's not a catch-all for everything. If you go into Shrewsbury or Clinton or Ashland or Grafton and read there, they have one sentence, premises used, and they use building, premises used by building contractor or subcontractor for storage of their vehicles, equipment, supplies and fabrication of subassemblies. I mean, that's all they have. I, I didn't find one where you have all the sales of lumber and retail materials. You know, and even Bob said it.
So again, my question goes back to, is, 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 do you want to, because there seems to be a lot of verbiage here. And, and again, that leads to more vagueness. I mean, I, I, you know, vague is kind of like in the eye of the beholder, you know, I mean, it, you, you don't, you know, zoning isn't black and white. You know, zoning is never black and white unless you talk about setbacks. So, so is it, if it's the, if it's the definition for a contractor's yard and we want to change what a contractor's yard is, that's, that's an easy fix.
That's all I was trying to do.
That's what I'm trying to get at. So you, so, so you, you want a contractor's yard just to be for storage? No, no.
Yeah, but they can, they can have an office there. It's not, it's a storage, like, like in the old, like some of the contractor yards in the olden days, it was that they had their office, their garage and their yard. But they weren't selling like items out of their yard, like lumber.
I have a question for you, Amy, about the condos, or we wouldn't say condos, but I like that component of it. If you just scroll down for a second. So Michelle, this sounds like, Michelle, are you there? Oh. Did I, I can't hear you. You're muted there.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. So I, I actually like the idea of like making different levels of it a little bit because I like Making different levels of it a little bit because I like the. You know, Michelle, I think you've mentioned before a need for like those smaller guys to have a home. That they may not need that big giant type space and, you know, all of the, you've mentioned before, all of the empty. Places in town where they're just not filling up. So is this an opportunity, is this where business is going? Is there an opportunity here where we could get more business in this area? Is that something, am I stating what you had said before correctly?
Yeah, and I also think of, um. So Amy, when you're thinking about contractors, landscapers, and I I forget how you defined it up above. Were you thinking that this would then be zoned for a specific area of the town?
Well, they already are, contractors' yards are are zoned in industrial.
Right, so to me, that's more like outside, right? It's like open and outside. When I thought about the contractors condo, that's more like a building use inside. Um, similar to what the project you were just discussing. So that might be not necessarily in um industrial, but could also be in a commercial area. They just wouldn't have the open space that you're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I don't think I would put them on Main Street. Cause when you go back to the community development plan, the whole goal was to lessen the amount of. Warehouses, cars, grass, gas stations, like all the. The trucking.
I guess what we're talking about is what if a contractor, by the nature of it, someone who sells, who has a retail component to it. Right? Couldn't they be located somewhere between Marlboro and all the way to Shrewsbury?
Guess it would depend on how many trucks they had, you know, it's like. I haven't, in the towns that I've looked at, the contractors' yards are in industrial. Because if you go through Shrewsbury, their contractors' yards and trucking is all up on Route 20. Where you head towards Route 146. Yeah, they don't run it down their main street.
But that's what we're talking about, the small business guy versus the larger.
Right.
Right?
Is there a way to like, make sure that we're not? So where would the commercial condos go in your mind for district wise?
See, in my mind, I would have had them in industrial, but now you could have a bigger commercial condo, like. So someone could come in and build a warehouse and it would house more than one contractor, so that would make it. Easier for them to afford the building. So they would, when I talked to a, a person, a lawyer in one of the classes I just took. And I talked about these type of buildings, she said they're really warehouses. So in our town, we, we called the one up by Walmart, it started as a warehouse, self-storage. And then turned into. Um, housing contractors. So I guess, I don't know, it's where, where do we want to put them, but. There, it's so vague because we're calling one thing contractors' yards. I asked some other people and they say those are warehouses. I just, I feel the definition we have for contractors' yard is too vague.
Okay, so let's walk through an example of what a current um contractors' yard that we have, like a good example of one that we think fits. It's this, what we think, what's here is a standard definition, I guess. Is there an example right now of a contractors' yard in town? To just kind of walk through it and put a. Case to it a little bit.
Well, we just approved the one near 290, the Wheelers, that was a contractors' yard. They're gonna do plowing.
So are the Wheelers selling anything? They're not selling anything, they're in like this standard model of a contractors' yard?
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they snowplow. They snowplow in sand and um. You know, have contracts, I mean, they're very specific actually what they do.
Do they have an office?
They have an office, they will have an office in their building, yes.
And they also have excavators, they do earthworks, they said, when it's not snow season.
Right, right. So they ha- so they have all heavy equipment, they're heavy equipment operators. So their heavy equipment operate, their heavy equipment will be stored there. Um, and they run their business out of tha- that, you know, out of that, will run their business out of that building. So that's in the industrial district. Um, you look at Zecos. You know, people might think of Zecos, well, I mean, to me, that's the classic that comes to my mind when you talk about a contractors' yard. You know, enormous piles of material um that people, whether you're retail or wholesale. Can go, you know, I I can go there and get my mulch from my yard, um, or my stone, you know, whatever. And then, um, you know, a landscaping company goes there and buys it wholesale.
Okay, so Amy, in your, in this definition, where does Zecos fit?
I would have it right here under E, sale of grain lumber, construction or garden supplies. I think they're a business establishment and they're selling garden supplies and construction products and agricultural. Inside and outside.
Do they store like? Like land, I don't know, any equipment, like lawn mowers or stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, they, they don't sell any garden supplies.
Right, but it would fall under here, they sell construction.
Well, I think, I think, I think ultimately Bob would put them in a contractors' yard.
See, I wouldn't, that's, that's where our. I think a contractors' yard is for a contractor doing, and and that is more sales. Zeco doesn't store he- heavy equipment, they don't.
Yes, they do. If you go by there and look at the machinery they have. They've got some very big machinery in there used for processing of stone and firewood and loading trucks, and they have their own trucks as well. They also, they also make their products available to retail sales. Um, so, you know, under the current definition, that is a contractors' yard.
See, I wouldn't see that because when I picture a contractors' yard, I picture the Wheeler with the heavy equipment, and that's what they applied for. Where if I drove by Zeco with the dirt, the mulch, the stone, I would picture that as this definition that we have that falls in Business West. Um, sale of grain lumber, construction garden supplies. I picture a contractors' yard as a contractor who's actually going out and doing work at your house. Whether they're installing a patio or they're doing your lawn, or they're building your house. Those are contractors, and where I picture Zeco, they're selling supplies, they're selling product that you can use. Or a contractor can use.
You, you mentioned uh Shrewsbury, but let's extend a little bit into Worcester, what about um Kamasi and Sons?
That's on that same Route 20 back there.
Right.
Yeah, but it's not on their main street in Shrewsbury.
No, 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 what would you consider that to be?
I've never been there, I've seen the sign, but I I really, I haven't been by there, been by there for years, so I don't know what it looks like.
Okay, so I'm interested, um, board members, Millie, do you have any thoughts on this one?
Well, I guess, I mean, some of my questions, I, I understand the wanting to make the definition and tighten it up. But one, some of the questions I have are, what are we eliminating or affecting by tightening up that definition? And, y- you know, I guess, what problems would we be creating by doing that? And I think. You know, you just want to make sure when you're changing something like that, that you're solving the problem, but you're not creating others.
Okay.
Yeah, and and that's what's worth looking at is maybe asking again, either Bob, what? What problems are being created that we haven't thought or talked about? But to solve a problem is a good thing, but if it's creating others, we want to make sure we're not doing that.
The, the, the thing is that the, you know, we, we've had one contractors' yard that has, in my tenure here. It's been installed successfully from the ground up, and that's out on Goddard Road, okay? The other two that's, that recently have been. Um, West Main Street and the Southwest Cut Off, okay? You know, i- in, in, those were kind of a different situation because it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, alright? Um, so, you know, again, going back to Kathy's question is, are you trying to? Fix the contractors' yard by removing or adding things to it? And again, to Millie's point, what are you, what are you alienating in the process? Or is the argument more, you know, tightening up the, the pre-existing use, non-conforming. Uh, language further down in the bylaws. Okay, I think there's a lot of confusion between the two.
I was actually trying to do both.
You gotta do one at a time, Amy.
I know, I'm trying.
Any thoughts from you, Michelle? So my concern goes back to, I still understand how you want. So I also, also think, Amy, when you were describing how you thought a contractors' yard was. And I think when you described it, it was like people who go to other places. Like a contractor who does a patio, or contractor who does, builds a home, or, or whatever. But I also think there are contractors whose only client is these people, so they're like, sort of. It's like, uh, they're providers for um contractors, right? They provide a product or, or something that contractors use. I don't know if there's any of those in town, but clearly, um, um. Great, Zecos provides tons of products for contractors that they use. Um, my concern was, when you get into a contractor, and I think Bob, you were, is he still on with us, or Bob went away? Here he is. I think with Bob, we were talking about, like, what do you do with the plumber? Or the guy who wants to open a granite shop, or the guy who wants to open up a cabinet shop, who, and then. You know, um, or electrician, or, I guess we can go through a whole gamut of different types of smaller contractors. Where do you put them? And I, and I think what we could talk about is that. The land value is so expensive in industrial. That putting them over in industrial, they may never have a home, an opportunity for a home. So is there some way that you can get them to blend in with Main Street? Right, is there some way where someone could drive up, you know, to plumbers who offers plumbing for services? And then has, you know, some plumbing displays like faucets or what inside their, their office, and then. Uh, you know, then goes to the house instead. I mean, a classic example is, um. You know, in the building that used to be the dentist office at the intersection, um, right down near, um. You know, Remains in that plaza, you know.
Times Square.
Yeah, people will, in Times Square, it's a painting company now. And they'll go and they'll, they'll sit down and meet with the clients about painting and stuff, schedule painting and stuff. But they're not, they're not, um, their trucks are there, but they're not housing paint supplies there. But, but they're housing, you know, samples and materials and stuff. I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing, I, I don't know how you feel about that, but to me, that was a contractor who's now on Main Street. Um, and he's, you know, able to meet with his clients and show his products.
What were they classified as? Do you remember?
What are they classified as?
I didn't hear you, you saying something?
Office business.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that isn't even a contractor yard. And even the granite was um classified as retail sales. I really think contractors' yards are different, that's where you store all the heavy machinery.
So like a plumber's home, is that also an office business? If it was a plumber or electrician, similar?
You're asking Bob, right?
Oh yeah, Bob, do you know?
Say that again?
Like if it were a plumber or an electrician, is that also office business?
Um, if he's not storing any of his equipment there, yeah.
But if he had a couple of vans or whatever, is that okay?
Probably office business.
Okay, I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to it, I'm just trying to categorize it in my mind.
No, it's, it's, I, I had a long discussion with um Metro West Painting. Um, because I told them, I says absolutely no, you know, because it's office business primarily. Um, you know, to conduct their operations, and they're not selling any retail, they don't sell paintbrushes, they don't sell paint, you know, so. If any, if a customer was to go there, it's to make arrangements, to have a service provided at their own home, okay? Um, and I, I, I told him, I says, you know, if I catch you storing ladders there or staging or any of that stuff, we're gonna have a chat. Um, because it's, 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 that's not allowed in the district. Okay, and it's, it's, in that point, it becomes, again, a contractors' yard and not a, a business office establishment.
Okay. Anthony, any thoughts from you?
Yeah, so, I think the, I think what Amy's intent here is, and a lot of this, I think, is focused on. Southwest Cut Off and um. Um, West Main, and, and I think that. I think the intent here is like, do we want to continue to build in a business district, we want to continue to build metal shell buildings? Um, do we want to have lots that are filled with um tens of trucks uh in that area? Or do we want to filter tha- those type of businesses more in an industrial setting? And, and I believe we want them more in an industrial setting as we try to clean up Route 20, Main Street. West Main. Um, and if we don't start, like, better defining this, we're never gonna get a handle on this. And, you know, there is, but there's not a lot of land, but Barefoot has got a lot that's been sitting there for, for sale. For a year and a half already, just a lot sitting. The guy was gonna build a contractors' building there, and he never finished. And so I think there's opportunities for these, these metal boxes that, you know, are for plumbers or electricians who are other businesses. You know, I think you've got, you know, Zeco is over there, or L and, L and S is fine. Um, but I do think that we need to do a better job. I, I, I mean, I've heard the, the say, well, it's so vague. I did hear these things said, that the, the definition's so vague, how can we, you know, tighten it up? Now, whether it's through zoning or non-conforming, um, and I would, if, or, or both. I do think something needs to be addressed. And, you know, from day one, I've always been just confused over. West Main and how we can't make that something a little bit nicer.
So I, so I think, Anthony, I think you just, you know, you, you just nailed it. So, so the, i- if everyone agrees. With what you just said, that, that's, that's what it has to get boiled down to. What, what, what is it that you want or don't want? You know, in, i- if, if we're specifically talking about, uh, you know, um, Southwest Cut Off and West Main Street. And you don't want a certain use there, then that's what we. That's what we regulate. So, so if you know, if, if you, if you don't want to have. You know, a, 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 a business that has a lot of vehicles. Then, you know, we need to look at the use table and, and go through the use table for, for like the Business West zone. And that, that's, that's very straightforward to do. But it's very different than just saying, okay, i- i- is it a contractors' yard that is the problem? And if, and if that's the, and then if that's the case, if it's a contractors' yard that's the problem. Then that's, you know, relatively straightforward to fix also. But it's, it's, it's drilling down here to what is the issue? Is it, it, do you want a contractors' yard to only be about, you know, outside storage? And that's fine, if that's how you want it to, to read. And, and you only want that outside storage in the industrial district? That's easy, you know, that's, that's a definition and a use table change. But if it's, i- if you're trying to take a contractors' yard and, and make it into something different. Which is what I think you're trying to do, Amy, and I'm not, that's not good or bad, I'm just saying, I think. What, what you're doing is you're, you're expanding what a contractors' yard can be. By adding in, you know, a landscaping yard, a storage yard, you know, building contractors, subcontractors. You know, it's that, we, it, that's really broadening what a contractors' yard is going to be. And it, and if the issue is, is trying to limit contractors' yards and to specifically put them someplace, I mean, again, right now, they're only allowed in the industrial district.
Right.
Then that's, that's a different animal, you know, then, then if, if, if everyone just wants a contractors' yard to be storage of equipment. You know, that's, that's an easy fix. I don't know that people will agree with it, but I mean, that, that's an easy fix. As opposed to, uh, you know, I'm, I'm still not understanding. You know, the, 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 the proposed changes here, like what, what is it that we're trying to make a contractors' yard? So I think, I think like Anthony said, is it, i- if you want to. So I think, I think like Anthony said, is it, i- if you wanna, if you wanna start to, um, you know, if you don't wanna allow certain uses in the Business West, that's where everyone seems to be focusing is in the Business West District. Then, you know, that, that's a, that's a different path. And we need to take a look at all of the uses that are right now allowed in, in Business West. And we need to, to, you know, go through them individually and do they work or the, or do they don't work?
I already did that, but we've already done that. I mean, we have a community development plan that already went through that and said, you know, take out the heavy equipment. Take out, I have the piece of paper.
Well, right. We have a community development plan that was done in 2005. It's a mini master plan.
Right.
The, the community development plan was implemented and a zoning change was, was done in 2009. So boom, done, we're over the community development plan. We're now into the master plan because the community development plan was just a, you know, a stopgap measure in between the last master plan and this current master plan. So now we're into our brand new master plan. And now we've got to, you know, work the next couple of years on how we implement that new master plan. And, and I'm sure it will involve some zoning changes. And how we go about doing that is, you know, very comprehensive, involving other boards, involving, um, you know, uh, having a consultant come in here and, and we go through, you know, our zoning bylaw again.
Right. But I watched and read the minutes from 2009, I read the minutes. And when they made the changes, even Rick Lee said, if this doesn't do everything we wanted to do, you can come back to it. And community development plan had this long list of things and not all of it get done. So I didn't think it was bad to go back to it. And, and for the contractor's yard, storage yard, they're not even allowed in Business West right now.
Yeah. So that's one thing for, so for me, I like the idea of tightening it up. But I also am trying to like scan through the other businesses to make sure we don't accidentally, you know, make this difficult for someone. Like we just talked about electricians and plumbers and it sounds like that group has a home. I'm just trying to figure in my mind, does, does everybody have a home if they wanna open a business here? If we tighten this up? And so far it sounds like everybody has a home, except Bob, you mentioned an instance where, well, what if somebody wants to sell a bucket of mulch? I don't know if we can ever keep up with the, you know, if somebody does something under the slide, we didn't. So for me, if we can tighten this, but then make sure that, uh, you know, Millie, it sounded like that was what you were saying too. Like you were trying to think about, does everybody have a home here? One thing about the use table, so it, it obviously is only allowed in industrial for contractor's yard. So Kathy, how would we use the use table for Business West in that instance?
For a contractor's yard?
Well, for, if we didn't want something to be somewhere, like Anthony mentioned a couple of spots we're thinking about. It's already not allowed in those areas. Well, actually industrial is the, it's still industrial zone where the overlay is.
Right. But is, so again, this goes back to my original question of what is it that we're trying to look at? If you, if, if it's, if this is all about pre-existing non-conforming uses, which just about everybody in Massachusetts, it's not unique to Northboro, has an issue with. We're one of the few states in this country that, that allow pre-existing non-conforming uses. But, but it's something that has, that, that the planners group repeatedly has tried to change at the state house and, you know, make a change to 48. So in the big picture, if, if, if what we're talking about is pre-existing non-conforming uses, you know, this isn't the way to go about it. But the, but just going back to specifically a contractor's yard, if you wanna change the definition of a contractor's yard, fine. But then we have to look at, okay, well, now that you've changed the definition, where do, where do you want that to be? And, you know, do you, do you wanna expand it to other zones? Or do you wanna limit it to just the industrial zone where it is limited to today? So if a brand new use came in today that Bob classifies as a contractor's yard, yard, excuse me, they would have to be located in the industrial district.
Right.
But if, but if, but if somebody, you know, if there's, you know, and again, there's pre-existing non-conforming uses in all the districts, not just Business West, but we happen to have two sort of right in a row. And that's, that's what everyone is, you know, is on the forefront of everyone's mind. Then, you know, those are two pre-existing non-conforming, um, contractor's yards. And, and as long as Massachusetts has pre-existing non-conforming uses, they will, they can be, the, that use can continue.
Okay. So if we, what is the good next step for this one? If we, so I wanna make sure that we get through our bylaws. We have obviously a lot to cover. So what's a good next step, knowing those are the, do you feel like you have an understanding of the problem, Kathy? Or you're still not sure what the problem is?
Well, what, what, what I've written down for notes, um, and I, and, you know, it, you all let me know if this is where you're going, is, is it seems like you want a new definition for contractor's yard. You want it to be more limited as opposed to what, what I think Amy has proposed is opening it up. But, so you want it to be, what I'm hearing is I think you want it to be more limited so that it's just about the storage of equipment and that we want to keep that in the industrial district. We don't wanna put that anyplace else. That's what I, that's what I'm hearing. Now you tell me if that's what you all mean.
Well, I would say for me, it's as long as everybody has a home. Like we didn't just take a home away. Like if somebody, if they fit into other stuff, that's good. I think that obviously we'll need to think about. I, I don't know. Other thoughts on that?
I, I agree that that's what I was looking to do and I think everybody will have a home because, um, because we have the sales area. If you think of the granite salesperson, he came in and he's selling granite and he got a home in a retail business. So he's a contractor and he's going out and selling and he's going out and installing, but he's not storing tons of equipment. Like I, to me, the contractor's yard is when you have all the equipment and outside storage. And, and even, you know, Dave Varan, who is a contractor, said Business West is not the location for that. He said, take it out to Cedar Hill Road and that's where it shouldn't be in the gateway in the Northboro. And, and I feel the way that sales are included now, it's so vague that anyone who says they're selling something can always already say like, well, then I'm a contractor's yard because I'm selling this. I'm selling granite. So now I know I was retail sales, but now I'm really a contractor's yard. Or I was selling bricks. So now I'm a contractor's yard. And that's where it's used with the non-conforming because if it's not a, a black and white straightforward definition, then your definition can be used to piggyback off of for different grandfathered uses. So they are tied together. They don't have to be tied together, but they are because people can look at a vague definition and say, well, I fall under that.
Okay. So what about for a next step is just verify, if we were to look at this definition?
To Carrie?
Yes.
I think this is really worthwhile having a discussion with the ZBA too. Because they're gonna see the, you know, they're gonna, they're on the other side of this. So maybe, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, um, about the way Amy is putting it now. I mean, do, why don't we just see what another board thinks about it?
Okay, that's fine. But also, um, it, both between now and then, if anyone on staff thinks of like, has that, oh, wait a minute, we forgot about this business or just kind of figuring if there's something that would give somebody, you know, we accidentally prohibit by mistake, um, I would just, I obviously wanna be sensitive to that.
Bob, didn't you say at one time that, um, landscaping was not defined within the zoning bylaw? So it is good that we're putting a home for them, right?
Yeah. I mean, landscaping yard was never in the, um, you know, the definitions of the bylaws. So, you know, when, you know, what, what, and, and part of my job is to try to figure out where a use would be allowed, um, without going or with going to a board. Um, and my interpretation was, okay, if you're a landscaper, it's a contractor's yard. Okay. Cause you've got equipment, you've got machinery, you've got supplies stored. Um, then you probably have an office to conduct your operations. And then, and that's how we, we kept it. I mean, it's, is the landscaping yard any different than, um, uh, the, the building going up on Goddard Road? You know, to get machinery outside is a different type of machinery. They do a different type of activity. Um, but it's generally not on that site. It's on somebody else's property.
Okay. So any further, Michelle, did you have any further comments on that?
No, I was just saying that I think this would be more helpful to Bob to including the terminology landscaping yard as well as contractor's yard.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I've got, you know, in terms of landscaping contractors or storage yards or whatever, I, I don't have a problem with all of that coming under one umbrella. Um, because I, you know, if it's a landscaping yard, I don't see it really as any different than any other type of contractor. Um, so, you know, if it's a contractor's yard slash landscaping yard slash storage yard, um, I, I, I really don't have a problem with that. Um, but again, you've got to be careful about what you're, by writing something a little tighter, what are you alienating down the road? And that's, that's difficult because, you know, everybody has a different crystal ball.
Just, I guess Kathy and Bob can try to think of something, but like Carrie asked, like, I don't see anything that we would be alienating.
Okay.
And we have grain lumber at, at top. It talks about the sale of lumber and the lumber is already for sale down here in a different bylaw.
Okay. So for this one, next steps, um, let's think about anything we're alienating by changing the language. And, um, like Michelle suggested, uh, it's just ZBA input from their side. It sounds like some of the feedback came from things we're hearing for them. But either they've said it vague or they said they thought it was vague or something to the effect of that. So next steps for those, for that one.
Okay. So now I'll stop sharing. Let me see. I can go to my next one. I know this is hard. It's not something that I like to do, but I feel like I've been on the board for seven years. And there are things now that are still popping out that I wanted to, you know, fix seven years ago. And I see it in the community development plan from 2003. And we still haven't, you know, just gotten there yet. All right. I don't, I, the next one I was gonna bring up was the craft brewery, but I don't know if that's worth talking about tonight. Because, um, I think Kathy said she hasn't heard back from the Board of Health yet. They're pretty busy.
Oh, right.
And, um,
First, Amy, you need to share that puppy.
Uh, I know I did for a second.
Oh, I didn't see her. But I, I'll, I can give you just, I mean, it's, it's just two, it's two seconds about the craft breweries. I'm waiting for information from other people. Um, and I also have a call into the, um, ABC Board, Alcohol Beverage Commission, A, ABCC. Um, because I found out that it's not, towns don't issue the licenses for, um, for any of this, the, these craft, like, you know, whether it's a distillery or, you know, hard cider, beer. Um, so the state does it directly. And so, um, I, I wanna get some information from the state too, as far as how, how they, be- before we go saying that we wanna encourage one, how, how do we know that they will, you know, grant a license in Northboro? So that's some of the information that, um, she coming?
Yeah, my son's bringing her in.
So that's some of the information. So I mean, I should have that, you know, in between now and, and the next meeting. And then, um, like Amy said, I told her earlier today, um, I, I was, I was, um, on a call with our Board of Health agent about a, a completely different project. And, um, she is just, I mean, as you can imagine, you know, e- every Board of Health office in Massachusetts is just so straight out.
She's currently doing seven days a week.
Uh, right. Exactly. Seven days a week.
Eight weeks old. She just came from Ohio. She had a two-day drive. Right.
What type of dog is she, Amy?
She's a sheep-a-doodle.
Sheep-a-doodle.
Yeah, you'll have to look it up. They're hoppy. She does hop. Here, I'm gonna put her back down.
She is adorable. So, um, and then also, um, I have, um, uh, um, I, I, you know, I've asked the DPW for some information and it may not even be an issue, you know, uh, uh, it's, um, you know, I know if, you know, some, you know, bottle washing, you know, company wanted to come to town, that's an issue with water. Um, uh, we had a yogurt distributor that wanted to come to town years ago, um, but the water usage was so high. You know, the town couldn't provide the, the volume of water. Um, but I, but I have no idea as far as the, um, brewery. So that, those are just some of the questions we've asked or I've asked. And, um, so as soon as I, you know, just verify that with, with folks, I'll send that out in an email. So, you know, you'll have it before your next meeting. Just some more background on that.
And then I was gonna open up the next one. And, and the use ferions too. I don't know if that's something we wanna go through tonight or wait till the ZBA comes in at the next meeting. I know we're getting down to the wire here.
So we talked before about, um, narrowing down prohibited uses.
Yeah. I just brought it up. Can you see it?
Well, I think, I forget who made the suggestion last time, maybe it was Michelle, that we at least like narrow down so that, you know, obviously we don't wanna get in a discussion about things like prohibiting things we know are gonna keep like contractor's yard or landscape business, stuff like that. But we were gonna talk about like, what are some definite, some black and white that we know for sure? We'd wanna maybe start with those no for, we know for sure type ones. I don't know. Does any?
Yeah, um, I would go through up to N. And I already think we have stuff in our definitions for billboards. Like I think billboards are already like just on the highway business. So.
It's under the sign section.
Yeah. So I think that's.
Where they're prohibited.
So I would just go to N, I think, and I haven't looked further. I don't even know if we need P because we already have, um, you know, the performance standards. Um, Q, I think we have some automobile storage yards, but I don't even think it's really defined in our bylaw. So I don't know. I don't know what to think about that. I actually just went up to N and didn't go further. I don't know what people think about automobile storage and vehicle storage yards. I guess nobody's really knocking down the door to do those. Not that they're knocking down the door for some of the others, but yeah, I guess I was just going to probably through N. And if anybody had something new to add, like these are just what was on the list. And I'm thinking how like, um, SA Farms is for sale. So, you know, you never know what could crop up.
Hmm. Okay. Any thoughts from board members? Millie, Michelle, Anthony?
No, nothing specific on this one. I mean, they probably won't even come up, but, and maybe something will come up that we don't even know. But I just know if some of these ever came up, that people wouldn't be happy. So I was just trying to be proactive. If, if we're gonna keep the use ferions right now, maybe use ferions is something that's talked about with master plan implementation.
What, um, can I, can I add something about the, the prohibitive uses?
Sure.
If, uh, uh, well, I don't know if you were done, Amy. Um, what, you know, again, this is one of those consequence, um, issues. We have to think about, because the, the way the zoning is written right now is that if it, if the use is not in the use table, it's prohibited. So, so instead of listing everything that we wanted to prohibit, the, it was written, you know, in 2009 that it would, it would be. it would be, if it's not, if it's not in our zoning, it's considered prohibited. Now, yes, you know, use variances are allowed in Northbro, so that's how, you know, someone would would, could apply for a use that's not on the list. But if you change the use table, and, and I don't know the answer to the question I'm going to ask yet, um, if you change the use table to now having prohibited uses in there, what, what happens about the uses that, that aren't on the table?
Hmm.
Uh, does, does that mean, um,
You're allowed.
Right, does that mean that they then become allowed by omission or, or, or you know, uh, is, do, do we add language that they're, you know, if we didn't think of something, it's, it's still prohibited? So that's just, I, again, I don't have an answer for that question, but that has to be, we have to address that.
Hmm, okay.
Do you ask town council? And I'll actually look through the bylaws where I pulled this from and see what they did. Cause I don't think they list all of these in their use table. I could be wrong.
Hmm.
Yeah, I, I mean, every, every town, you know, that it's much to the chagrin of everyone, there's three hundred and fifty-two towns now in Massachusetts. So there's Devon's. The, so there's three hundred and fifty-two zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
And, and everyone has a different way of doing things. So, um, so again, like I said, I don't have an answer, but I, I need to find an answer to that.
Okay.
If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go this route.
Well, plus we're also making note that you cannot get a use variance on any of these. So I won't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but what, but, but, so, so now you have a, you know, you, you've added these into, you know, e- either into the table of uses, uh, the actual table or into the section. And you're saying these are the, the specific prohibited uses in, in Northbro. So what if someone comes up with something that's not on this list? That's, that's what we have to think about.
Okay.
Now, could we ask, like, I know you probably know Barbara St. Andre, cause she is in Midway and this, they, Midway has this. So we could ask her what they do, like, I don't know, if you can just ask another town, how has it ever happened? I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of how, you know, I go about researching, you know, bylaws is, is, um, uh, is, you know, first trying to determine what the board wants to do or doesn't want to do. And then, then you start to craft the bylaw from there and then, you know, start to, to, to discuss with, with, you know, other planners, uh, you know, wh- what they have or don't have in their town. Um, and, and in particular, what's the background on it? Why, how did this, how did they arrive at this bylaw? So that's why a bylaw just isn't, you know, transferable from one, from one town to another. Um, cause every single one of these bylaws, just like us, has a story as to why it's in the bylaw. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I talk to Barbara all the time, but,
Yeah.
um, but, you know, she's not, she's not a consultant, you know, she, she left that world and she, you know, she, she's a me, you know, she works specifically for one town.
Yep.
Okay.
This was in Framingham and Midway, so I can look up both. I didn't go through all three hundred and fifty-two towns.
Okay, so basically next step here, we need to figure out what happens for our current, if not permitted, it's prohibited. What do we do with them?
Yeah, I would hope that would stay if we can. But it doesn't, it isn't a catch-all. Depends probably on how persistent the applicant is when they come into the office.
Okay, so we have a next step on this one. And then we have, do you have one, the non-conforming that the?
I do. I'm almost afraid to go there. Oh, okay, I gotta find it. Show all windows. Okay. Say. All right, so when it comes down to non-conforming, I just went to a class on non-conforming for the third time, I think. Cause non-conforming is a very tricky area. But the first thing I wanted to do with the non-conforming bylaw was add the intent and purpose, which, um, some towns have purpose and intent out of all their bylaws. The purpose and intent of non-conforming use is to ensure that non-conforming uses will ultimately comply with the use requirements of the zoning bylaw. I'd like to update the bylaw. So if there's a change or an expansion on a property, it actually triggers the non-conforming bylaw, seven point oh eight, because there have been some that haven't triggered the bylaw and I'm not sure why. And then for the third one, consider not allowing changes or expansions, cause in all the classes I've been told straight out, you, as a town, you don't have to allow a non-conforming use to change or expand. And, um, I guess what I'd ask for Bob and Kathy, how many have changed and expanded? Well, you don't have to go through them all if you don't want to, but I haven't heard of any that ex- at expand and change where the abutters and the neighborhoods near them are actually happy. I find that anytime a non-conforming use changes and expands, that's when we get the outcry of the people who are paying a lot of money in taxes in this town. So I just wanted to look into that. So per Mass General Law, a local government can prohibit the change or extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and use and es- essentially freeze the structures and uses. I was actually wanting to look forward to, I actually wanted to look into freezing a use. I, I didn't talk about the structures. I didn't go into anything, cause there's two separate parts to non-conforming use. And one is the use and one are structures. So I didn't, I didn't change anything with structures. I won't read all this. I included it with what I emailed out to everybody. So in two thousand and eighteen, there were changes to the non-conforming use bylaw. And it was to ensure change in non-conforming use was similar or less detrimental, but this wasn't triggered. Um, if we're ever gonna become a more pedestrian-friendly Main Street, meet the plans, visions and goals, we should remove the loopholes that allow expansions to new and unrelated and more detrimental uses. If a business is legally there, it has every right to continue. But, but if it exchanges or expands, they need to come in front of the ZBA for a special permit application. And I feel, and this is a question I actually had for town council, if fifty, and I know you don't want me to talk about, but fifty Southwest cutoff, the, the, if it, even if it's a non-conforming use, the buildings were demoed and it was expanded, I was wondering why did not, why didn't it trigger the non-conforming bylaw, section seven point oh eight? And if there's a reason why it didn't trigger it, I wanted to know how a new bylaw could be written, so it did. It's not that I have a problem with all of them. It's just that I do think when you're going from non-conforming uses, the point of them is to go in front of the ZBA, to go down if they're more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's what the point of non-conforming uses. And, and this one didn't even go in front of the ZBA for non-conforming use, even though it was. So I actually wanted to know before I write the bylaw, or before we, we write the bylaw or talk about the bylaw, why didn't an expansion not trigger a non-conforming bylaw? And how could a new bylaw be written so it did? I guess what I see is what we talked about earlier is in Business West, there, there was a lot of talk in nineteen, two thousand and three with a um, community development to bring that into a commercial zone. That's why all the stuff was added about sidewalks and trees and parking lots and landscaping. But there are some non-conforming uses over there and they're twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years old and that they're now switching hands. And I wanted to see how could we bring it closer to conformity, cause that's what I thought we tried to do in two thousand and eighteen. But then when it, when it happened this year or last year, it didn't come closer to conforming and, and in a way I feel it actually expanded further away. So I, I was gonna ask the board if we could actually ask a question to town council for next meeting on, on why didn't the expansion tr- not trigger a non-conforming bylaw? And how could we write the bylaw so it could trigger the, um, the ZBA special permit?
Okay, any, um, any thoughts on that from board members?
I, I mean, I think those are good questions. Um, I guess I think that maybe we should start there rather than rewrite a non-conforming bylaw yet.
Yeah.
Find out what happened or how that's happening. And then maybe write something accordingly if needed.
Yeah, and when, and when we do rewrite it, in two thousand and eighteen, there was a statement taking out shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. That was the problem that the state had with our bylaw. So I thought, you know, if we rewrite it, we could add it back in and it would fix that problem.
Okay, uh, Michelle, any thoughts from you?
No, but Amy, can you just repeat what you just said again?
About what? The substantially not detrimental?
Say that again.
In two thousand and eighteen, this was, um, the bylaw. In two thousand and eighteen, our old bylaw had this statement, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And we rewrote the bylaw in two thousand and eighteen. And we changed a couple of sentences to try to make it so it had to be a less detrimental use. So we changed it to this one up here. We took out shall not be substantially more detrimental and we put in is a similar or less detrimental use. But the state, and I just attended the class, um, I think they want that shall not be substantially more detrimental back in. That's what that was missing from the bylaw that they had concerns about.
Hmm.
So I thought if we fix the definition or fix the bylaw, we could add that phrase back in.
Okay, yeah, uh, Michelle, does that, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just, I was trying to figure out what you were saying, but yes, yeah.
Anthony, any thoughts from you here?
I think it'd be, it's worth pursuing. I, I'm a little confused about where we are today and what we took out and what the state made us
Yeah.
change. So, but yes, definitely it's, it's worth pursuing.
So, a- and I went to this class as well. And Kathy, I think you were there too. I think I saw your name up there. For some reason, my brain does not compute the non-conforming bylaw. So if we, if we could get some sort of, like, do you, are you following the problem, the heart of the matter, where, where we could like solve, figure out like how, what we need to do to solve the, the problem? Oh, I can't hear you, Kathy.
I'm sorry, uh, you, you're asking me if?
Yeah, like, is it clear what we are trying to do and maybe like help to guide us the right way? Because obviously it took a lot going back and forth last time and I don't think we accomplished it. So if we want, is it possible to, you know, maybe have town council guide us down to solve the problem?
Well, again, um, I, I need to know what the problem is that we're trying to, to fix. Um, if you're, if you're talking about um, the, the approved bylaw that the Attorney General's Office has already approved and, and is, and is not asking, you know, the town of Northbro to come back with any other additional language. Um, you know, there, there, there's not, there's not an issue there, you know, we're not, we're not, we don't owe the Attorney General's Office anything. They approved the bylaw as, um, Amy wrote it in, in two thousand and eighteen. If, if you're, um,
I just wanted to check one thing before you finish. I actually didn't write it in two thousand and eighteen. I wanted to work on it and, um, we had to bring it in front of the ZBA. And the ZBA and Kathy and talked about it. And when it got back to the planning board, I had my comments and was told that it was February and it's too late to make changes. So I did bring up the bylaw and I did want to change the non-conforming bylaw. And, um, I do have.
Someone changed, someone changed it.
Well, this is what I actually still have.
Someone, someone of you drafted it.
This is what I drafted.
It wasn't drafted by staff because staff didn't want to change the bylaw. So, so someone drafted it and, um,
But I think the, the issue on this here is we want to figure out how to kick off a non-conforming special permit so that we don't have an expansion problem. We don't want, we, is that a problem?
Well, okay, so then if that, if that's the, the, if that's the question, then, then we, you know, um, again, the zoning enforcement officer, you know, a- asked and answered these questions when they were raised um, about fifty Southwest cutoff. And, and again, you know, you, you, we're getting into turf here where, you know, the applicant is not present. But your, the, the, um, building inspector, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, made the determination that, that it was going from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use and did not see that as more detrimental to the neighborhood and, and everything else that, that's in our bylaw. Now, I accept the fact that some people don't like his interpretation, but that's his job. And the zoning Board of Appeals stood by his interpretation. The question was asked of town council by the zoning Board of Appeals. Is Bob's interpretation of this use, you know, going from one non-conforming use to another, was that correct? And town council responded, yes. So, so if the, so again, if the issue, if the question is very specific to, to fifty Southwest cutoff, let's talk about what, what that issue is. And, and then we can address, y- you know, po- possibly come up with some language to address that. So, so what I heard you just say, Carrie, was, was you, you want to look at, um, or this is what I think I, I, I understand it to be, is that you want to, wh- when someone is, when, when a, uh, when any new non-conforming use is replacing an existing non-conforming use, that I understand you want that to go to the zoning Board of Appeals? And, and if that's, and if that's the, if that's yes, then, then, then we can write a bylaw to, to say that. If, if that's what, if that's what the question is.
I just wanted to, um, now, the Mass State regulations say the extent that the non-conforming structure or use may be extended, altered or changed is left to the discretion of the local legislative body. Like, the way the state statute works is a change or extension should have gone to the ZBA. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering why Bob was the one in charge of going through the powers test? And it wasn't the ZBA, because the way I read it is it's up to the discretion of the local legislature, with legislative body, which isn't that the ZBA?
I need, I need to chime in here for, for a minute, Kathy, right? Number one, I gave it the powers test, the attorney for the town confirmed it, okay? Number two, the ZBA, okay, could have not taken what I said and voted the other way. Number three, um, I understand the concern for the neighbors, but both West Main Street and Southwest cutoff were in existence and operating before any of those other houses came in, came into town, okay? And my last point is that Amy- And my last point is that, Amy, if you're really upset about the fifty Southwest cutoff decision, why don't you appeal it in court?
Yes, but I'm just trying to figure out why our bylaw didn't trigger it. Because I have gone to this class three times and I'm trying to figure out why certain things happen. And then when I'm at the class, I hear, well, it's supposed to go to the ZBA. And but it didn't go to the ZBA. So I guess I want to ask, I do want to ask town council, how do we? And it's not that I don't trust your opinion, Bob. It's that.
That's exactly it.
No, the process is supposed to go to the ZBA, which is in a a board that has to go through certain criteria. And and they're a board of five people. And and I've read the interpretations that have gone to the town council. And if if you say it's going from one contracting yard to another contracting yard, is that allowed? That's vague. But if you say it's going from this to this, like, a lot of it comes down to how it's stated to um to town council. And I don't want even get into that. I just wanna, I'm not trying to, it's just an easy example to use. But I just I just, the way I read even our bylaw is when there's a nonconforming use and there's a change or an extension, that's supposed to go to the ZBA. So if it's not going to the ZBA, I wanted to ask why it's not and how we can change it so it does.
Well, Kathy, it sounds like you had said before, like, are we trying to figure out a bylaw that that has to make sure it goes to the ZBA? Is that what you said before about your understanding of the problem?
Well, no, I I that's what I'm hearing from from at least two members of the board that or or actually, is that what I'm hearing? Is that is that what is that what the issue is? Is the issue, you know, because again, it doesn't matter what the subject matter is. In order for us to write a bylaw, in order for me to write a bylaw, I need to know what's what's the what's the problem? Wh- wh- and where do we want to go with it? So so what so what's the problem? Is the problem that you no longer want nonconforming uses to continue in town? So if and 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 a possible remedy to that is is that every every time someone looks at a grandfathered site, they need to go to the ZBA? I don't know if that's legal or not. So so I'm trying to figure out what is the, you know, what what's what's the question?
Yeah, that's what I, and the way I read our bylaw now, it says if it expands, it should go to the ZBA. So I guess I don't understand. When I read expansion, like, these were buildings that were twenty eight hundred square feet going our definition that says an expansion triggers should go to the ZBA, why it didn't? And I guess I want to ask town council, if he didn't think it triggered going to the ZBA, why and how can we fix that? Because I do think.
Then what would cause a trigger if it's not?
What would? I can see if it's the exact use, like, if you're a gas station and you're just a new guy moving in and you're running the gas station, I see that wouldn't have to go to the ZBA. But if you're if you're a building that's that's, say, you're even a contractor's yard and you tear down your buildings and you expand them and you expand the hours and you expand into residential, how is that not an expansion that triggers our nonconforming bylaw? That's that's my question. So I wrote the questions here and I unless somebody wants to change the questions, I thought I had to have a description to say, like, if you said nonconforming, if you said contractors' yards to contractor's yard, of course, town council is going to say that's the same. If you say gas station to gas station, that's the same. But I want to ask town council, yeah, why it didn't trigger the nonconforming? And how we could write a new bylaw where it would trigger it? Or how would we freeze a nonconforming use in place? Because we're allowed to do that.
Okay.
And
So your questions are reflected right here.
In red, yeah.
Okay, the board members, are you in agree, are these questions that you would like answered as well, that you have questions about?
Yeah, for sure.
Anthony, would you?
I agree. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear the opinion.
So we can formulate this one?
Um, wait, Amy, can you send that to us? We don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Carrie, it's it's past nine thirty also.
Yep. Okay, so why don't we wrap? Well, next step here, let's get this. Let's find out some answers here so we can figure out what what our options are and help guide us a little bit further here to figure out. So that'll be the next step there. I think I definitely, I just want to quickly go through, I know we're super, we're late here. So I just want to quickly go through the last couple, which should be shorter. Amy, if you don't mind, stop. Yep. Okay. Okay, so for me, we had accessory dwelling. I think based on our last conversation, Kathy and Bob talked a lot about, you know, some of the implications there and some things that could backfire and how we people could get a dimensional use variance if they needed it, if they needed a larger spot. So the only thing that I still wanted to pursue, because it doesn't seem like we knew exactly why we did this in the first place, was to just change in the use table of what, yes, by right for an RA and RB for accessory dwelling units. So I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions on that or possible issues?
No.
Moving along, the I also included this so we didn't forget it. The staff, staff had a change for, oh, no, this is groundwater, I'm sorry. So hold on for that. Um duplex fix is the, this was something that is just taking on, it's seven fifty seven. It fixes the dual approval that we have going on for two family dwellings. And it seemed like the easiest way to fix that. And I don't know if Kathy, you saw anything in the bylaws that would contradict in other places. But all it was was adding two family dwelling applications to the other areas where we are the SPGA. So that would make us the SPGA for wireless, two family dwellings, and industrial district. So it's just adding this. And that takes away the need for applicants to go to two boards for one application. Um, so actually, this bring this down so it's all in one spot. Okay, so then we talked about, you know, the problem was, is there was a little bit of confusion in the the groundwater special permit that I just wanted to tighten up. Originally, I thought we could just add something here. But then Kathy and Bob went back and saw, well, you know, this may not make the exact sense for what we're trying to do. So what I looked at instead was I went back, I'd asked the board if they minded if I went back and took a look at other areas, especially in the overlay districts, I think. The other overlay districts had special permits as well. To just see what they had. One thing just quickly that I noticed, I don't know, I can send this to you separately. Oh, I didn't, I didn't include it here. One of the overlays referenced the wrong section, I think, Kathy. I'll send it to you separately to take a look so I don't take board time here. But I think it was the MCO D referenced the the ZBA section for special permits by mistake. But we don't have to address that here. I'll send that that might be a housekeeping, just I I want you to take a look at when you get a chance.
Yeah, there there's a, there's a couple of them in the bylaw that I've pulled out that I've that I've just asked if the code company can change them. And and I I don't have a response yet back from them, but whether whether they can just do it or it has to go to town meeting.
Okay, so yeah, maybe it doesn't. So that's good. So then I I just added something in here that really brought us back to the heart of a special permit, what I thought was the heart of a special permit. That just added, in this was the one overlay district that didn't have like a specific tieback. So I just added language here that's certainly up for debate, but the heart of the matter is to just somehow include that the the adverse effects don't outweigh the beneficial impacts regardless. Any special credit, special permit, I think should meet that parameter. So I thought to include it. And then one thing that I wanted to do.
Carrie, this is in the groundwater bylaw?
Yes.
These changes are?
Yep. And the language is certainly up for, I know it's late, so I don't want to, I'm just explaining at least. And then I don't think it's too, you know, I'm open to feedback and all of that. So I don't mean to go too fast, but just to at least get it out there. And then I I was thinking, we randomly have this section, it's not random, I'm sorry. We separately have this section about, you know, filing with the town clerk. But then we get into special permit criteria a little bit, which seemed odd. So my thought was, let's take that out of the this top section and I'll I'll send this over to everybody as well. And, you know, at least get it in the criteria, except that we've already said this part. It's in the meets the purpose and intent is actually number one, so we don't really need that. But then just somehow incorporate this next section. And obviously, Fred, I'd like your input and I'd be happy to share this with groundwater as well, just take a look at it. Again, I don't mean to fly by it. So just to add, this would actually be number four in the in the, this goes on, so there's two and three. And this would be number four. That just takes out that this part, which is kind of oddly positioned in the top section about filing with the town clerk, it just seemed like it was in the wrong spot. So I I obviously, any comments there or thoughts?
Carrie, did you send this out to us?
I didn't, and I'm sorry because I did it so late, but I will. I'll send it to everybody so you can look at it closely. I didn't think it was too involved, but of course, Fred, take a look, board members, take a look, staff, take a look. I'll send this out to you. And then I just wanted to note that the staff change so that we had, so that we didn't lose it. We have to somehow, Kathy, you write drafting the bylaw for this one?
Which one is this?
This is a change that I I don't know if you and Fred added it, or you and Bob?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so I just I just included it here to memorialize it, but I didn't have anything specific. I just wanted to include it while I was doing the other groundwater stuff. And then Fred, I had a quick question for you.
Sure.
That came to me about the minimum lot size for duplexes, if it contradicted the lot size for groundwater three? I don't expect you to know the numbers offhand, but maybe at some point, if you just take a look. Did you happen to?
The, there is no minimum lot size in groundwater three.
Okay, so I wonder.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's all, it's all based, well, you can answer it better than me, but I mean, it's based on.
Septic loading.
Yeah.
It it's all about how much of the septic sewage is going back into the ground and how much land area is required to dissipate that for the for the lot to accept it.
Okay, so I misunderstood.
So groundwater two has a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size and groundwater one has eighty thousand, but groundwater three doesn't have one. And then all duplexes or multifamily trigger a special permit in groundwater, no matter what size the lot is.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Carrie, just for a second though, but I just looked page seven sixty three. Number six, it does say two family, multifamily on lots of at least twenty thousand square feet. Is that what you were trying to say? And then our, but our bylaw for duplexes says twenty five? I I'm I'm just trying to, I just ran through the bylaw really fast into the bylaws. What we are trying to say, Carrie, that they don't match?
Yeah, there was, it negated it or it didn't, because the change from fifteen thousand to twenty five thousand, the twenty thousand was no longer. It just didn't serve a point anymore. But maybe I misunderstood.
It just means that any proposal for a duplex or a multifamily would have to get a special permit. It's it's just if the lot, there's a minimum lot size for the duplex is twenty five thousand and the groundwater bylaw says twenty thousand, it says the same thing because all duplexes or multifamilies require a special permit in groundwater.
Okay, so either, I mean, obviously, either way, there's a special permit, so I guess it doesn't.
Correct. It doesn't, it doesn't, there's nothing that's missed. It's actually more stringent than the the underlying zoning.
Okay. So I'll send this over to everybody for further review. And then just quickly to get back before we close to George, the conversation, we started off with George. Initial thoughts on that or what we want to do with that one?
I think we have so much to do right now and it's so last minute. And if his client is in a rush, I think it should, we could just do it over the next year. We've we've pushed off a whole bunch of things to next year during the master plan. And it's it's already January. But if I knew we're going to add to bylaw, a new bylaw, I actually have two more I wanted to add, but I held back because it's already January. I don't know, I just think that it was going to have to use staff time to look at maps and then write a bylaw to change the zoning district line. I don't think it's something we should rush because you don't know the unintended consequences of that. And I know it's just one property, but I think it needs to be looked at.
Any other thoughts?
I think just my original thoughts is it it almost appeared like there was a reason that it was carved out. And I'd like to at least know, you know, like to understand better, but maybe it's better just that it falls back into the master plan implementation committee to determine, you know, the zoning districts for downtown.
Yeah, I mean, if it came a little earlier, it's just hard next, next week, I'm sorry, the next meeting, we have two hearings, we have two public hearings. We got a meeting with the ZBA, we have to wrap up the bylaws on the table. We have a lot of unanswered things. I don't know if we can accommodate a full presentation on it. I don't, I don't think we can, unless someone feels strongly otherwise. It seems like a without having some sort of time sensitive issue, which it doesn't sound like. I would be curious to know how that happened. Anthony, they pointed out about carving around it is curious. So I wonder the history. Okay, so maybe let, maybe if George wants to talk to his client further, it doesn't sound like it, we can really get to it this year, but certainly something for next year or to bring, to talk about as part of master plan implementation, you know, what goes on with downtown? How we want to zone that, if there's a bigger, broader vision or something to that effect. Okay, any other business that we need to address tonight, any A and Rs or? No. Okay. All right, great. And then I think that's all we need to cover. Our next planning board meeting is January nineteenth. Is there a motion to close?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Sorry to keep you so busy.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Fred, do you know if we have groundwater next week?
I don't know yet. I'll I'll know in the next day or two. I just got some new plans in. I got to make sure that they need to go before. But I'll know in a couple of days.
Okay, all right. I was hoping now. All right, thanks.
Me too. All right, good night.
Thanks, bye.
Bye.